... legislative action requests and a report from our legislative advocate on legislative priorities and how things went, unless that's changed in the meantime. That one's still on for the 13th? Good. And June 20th is Ward Two night and the presentation on use of cable equipment funds and the contest franchise agreement. If anybody remembers, we were originally going to have that presentation tonight, but we moved it so we could have the Washington and Venice Hospital C O N discussion tonight, since that was timely. And then finally, for the last meeting in June, Monday, June 27th, there will be no council meeting that week, as most of the council will be attending the Maryland Municipal League Convention in Ocean City. At this point, we will move to public comment period. For anybody who'd like to comment on anything, excuse me, that's not a voting item, so that means if you're here to talk about Washington and Venice Hospital C O N application, there will be an opportunity for comment during that item. So, comments on anything else? If people want, okay. Mr. Lovelace from the back.
My name is Pat Lovelace, 762 Maple Avenue, Ward, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your favorite peace delegate. I've got a couple of announcements to make for you, because one of them is concerning June the 1st, which is tomorrow, Verizon Stock's offering time of day and the weather forecast announcement, so you won't be able to dial 301-936-1212 and get the weather forecast anymore, which is going to be an inconvenience for people who do not have computers and who are totally blind, you know, and whoever their hand's gone and everything. People in my situation, it's another assault on the disabled as I look at it, because it's just another convenience that's being taken away. And also, on a better note, we have the starving for justice demonstrations against the death penalty coming up on the 29th, 30th, 1st, and 2nd at the end of June and the beginning of July. So if anybody out there wants to come down to the Supreme Court and protest the death penalty, you'll be able to talk with Exon, a region where they've been on death row for crimes they had not even committed, who have had the police come in their house and take them out, and have been wrongfully convicted and almost executed. And as we all know, there has been people that have been executed for crimes they've never committed. Also, 4th of July is coming up, and I'd like to see everybody coming out to the 4th of July parade, and maybe we can get the parade to be really good this year. Remember, we're focusing on the green environment this year. Also, one thing I'd like to bring up, Ward Two nights coming up, and I'd like to see if possibly that we can, we can get the children and the youth to come out on Ward Two night to express what's going on in their schools and what's going on in their neighborhoods, because we'd like to be able to serve the entire city, not just the adult population, because that's apparently what everybody's focusing on. And I'd like to hear from the children and the youth and teenagers of our schools, because that's one way to keep them out of gangs, is get them, encourage them to take part in our city government. Come to our meetings, it's better than the gangs, you know? Don't go to the gang, don't go to drugs. Come to us and learn something, learn how you can make your city a better place, become an activist, become a good peace activist, and try to make your city and your world a better place than when you were, when you had gotten it. Thanks for letting me share. Okay?
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace, and I'm sure you meant to say that the 4th of July will continue to be good.
Yeah, I meant to say that. Let's try it again.
Anybody else for public comment?
It'll always be good.
Wait, close public comment down before she gets to the microphone.
No, 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 I'm going to make it only 30 seconds.
It's a two-page or two, I don't have to talk really fast.
I can't believe it.
Time's running.
All right. It's just an update on what I presented to you all, I guess in January, with the Recreation Committee, called the Teen Community Garden. This is our mission statement, and this bold and innovative teen community garden will afford our Tacoma Park youth the opportunity to prepare a project and take it to completion. This wholesome activity will help keep them safe in a shared framework that ensures their healthy development, strengthens their relationships in a positive way, and gives back to their community and families the bounty of their achievement. So this is where it sits. Past history, what caused that mission statement to happen was all the tagging that happened last May, all the way along Maple Avenue, actually up Sherman Avenue, which is the S.S. Carroll Neighborhood Association. I got involved, Terry and Dan and I had a meeting with the adult teen community leaders, which led to a meeting with the teens, which led to amongst many suggestions, the suggestions for a garden and the ability to learn how to cook the food. And so, that's where we are right now. The teen, well, I said this already, I announced this at the council during the January Recreation Report, and I'd like to say it's my own original idea, but no. Michelle Obama had it first, so I'm just kind of catching on to her youth community garden that's on the White House grounds, and I figured if Michelle Obama can have a garden on the White House grounds, we can have a garden on the community center grounds, and we do.
All right.
I took the lead on the project, I asked for a grant from the Tacoma Foundation, which they graciously provided at my request, and after searching the community center area with Darryl Braithwaite, with an eye for sun and water, we found a spot adjacent, down in, actually in the police department's parking area. It is definitely a 20 by 20, it's curved, it's a container space, and it's working right now, for sure. A dear friend of mine, and I gotta say, he was the captain of the patrols, 1953, 1954, off Tacoma Park Elementary School.
He must be real old now.
Yes. He donated the time and his labor to actually clean the debris out of the space, and he brought me back a full cubic yard of organic leaf grow and topsoil. The S.S. Carroll Neighborhood people, the youngest being four, oldest being 69, got together right after that, and we prepared the soil for growing. Our very own Howard Cone, who knew he was a farm boy from Michigan, actually planted most of the garden. I planted it too, am I done? Can I go just a little longer? Please, a little longer. And even in the heat, it's being watered every other day, and it's flourishing, it's growing, there's corn, there's actually sweet corn growing out there. So it's going to be interesting to see if we have any harvest. We've got signs preparing and acknowledging the city of Tacoma Park especially and Tacoma Foundation, and the signs will go up probably by this time next week. All of the vendors, almost all the vendors, the Tacoma Park people have graded us discounts. The signs are going to be made with biodegradable laminate, for sure. And I just wanted you all to know, I appreciate your allowing me this time to come and speak to you anytime I want to, and I just wanted you to know how it was going. And it's right, if you go out the front doors and peer down, you'll see it, it's very beautiful. I think probably the most beautiful part of it is what I call urban rocks, and they're around and involved in the herb side of it. Now, urban rocks are concrete rubble, and I picked all of that up around the community center, everything, every little rock that's there, I captured. It was just kind of hanging out around here. So again, thank you, and we might give you a tomato when they come in, we'll just have to wait and see. I'm seizing, we'll give you a tomato.
Do we have to catch it?
Yeah, you might have to catch it, I might be pitching it from here.
And should we start calling you Michelle?
Oh, yes, please.
Yeah, okay.
But the teens we'll meet with this week, and we'll get them rolling on it as well. It's a fun project, lots of love went into that garden.
Thanks, Kay.
Good evening. Diana Cone, 16 Jefferson Avenue, President of Historic Tacoma, and I'm also here to acknowledge a good deed. On behalf of the Board of Directors of Historic Tacoma, I wish to convey our sincerest appreciation for the efforts of city workers who participated in the cleanup and revitalization of the Thomas Segler Garden and Carriage House this spring. Their tireless work has helped make the park more inviting. We especially wish to thank Mike Welch and the Garden Division employees who began the process of restoring the gardens around the Carriage House by removing truckloads of dead and unwanted vegetation, pruning the existing plants, hauling rocks for use around the back foundation and pathways, all the while providing landscaping and mulching services and consultation. We would also like to cite the outstanding contribution of Todd Bolton, who was very helpful in offering his expertise to the project, the city arborist. Finally, we particularly wish to thank Darryl Braithwaite of Public Works for facilitating not only the grounds improvements, but also the repair to the Carriage House itself, including the bathroom plumbing, wiring for the exterior lights, and security for the garage doors. Historic Tacoma is pleased to have participated in this collaborative effort. We provided volunteers to replace muttons and the window panes after a window was broken earlier this spring. We restored the interpretive sign at the corner of Tulip and Cedar, refurbished benches, repainted a portion of the exterior wall, removed debris from the roof, replaced the lock on the driveway sign, planted flowers, and contributed to the removal of additional dead and unwanted vegetation. This project has been a highly successful joint effort, and one that we would like to continue. Through our combined efforts, we hope to see the garden and the Carriage House more fully restored and used for other community activities. Again, we thank you for the assistance of city employees in reaching this milestone. It would not have been possible without them. We're proud to have these dedicated people working for the city, providing excellent service to the community. And for those of you who did not attend the house and garden tour, which began at the Carriage House and was part of the reason for the spring effort, I invite you to come by and take a look, and you may be amazed by the transformation. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, council comments. Councilmember Clay.
Let's see, I have a couple of comments. Tomorrow night is the first of two sidewalk meetings that are just initial meetings for the Saskia community. These two meetings on the 1st and the 9th will be held here at the community center in the Azalea Room and start at 7:30, and we're just going to be talking about the introduction to the process, the things that have come before, information about the tool design survey, what is a right-of-way, what are the kinds of environmental remediation you can do around sidewalk issues, those kinds of things. So lots of information, and we're going to be focused in the area of Saskia that is between Ethan Allen and Sligo Creek Parkway for these meetings. And then we'll have, there's already some meetings going on around Central Avenue for Long Bright Sligo, which is in process, and then hopefully later in the month, or maybe we'll move into July at this point, we'll have some meetings for the area of Saskia that is south of Ethan Allen. Also, while I'm doing upcoming activities, the Jazz Fest is coming up on June 5th, so I hope that folks will come out for the Jazz Fest, it's in downtown Tacoma Park, and I actually haven't been to the Jazz Fest before, so this will be my first time going to the Jazz Fest. I don't know where I'm at usually on the weekend that the Jazz Fest happens, but I'll be out there at the Jazz Fest, that'll be a good time. And the following Saturday night on June 11th, the Tacoma Park Folk Festival is having a pub crawl that will include Everyday Gourmet, the Olive Lounge, and Roscoe's. And so, we'll have music at each of those places, each of those venues, and we're going to have some Civil War music, some sea shanties, and I don't know, Councilmember Robinson, what's your group going to play?
It's really an eclectic mix.
So, good times should be had by all, and we will be selling our mugs and admission, essentially, at the, we'll be starting at the Jazz Festival and the farmer's market that weekend, and it will be out the day of the event. So those are activities that are coming up, and then the next thing that I'd like to tell you about is that I have been working from home today, so I went to check out the start of the road repave of 410, and I have five pictures, I downloaded them to my computer so you guys could see them at the break if you want to. But I went out this morning from 7:00 to 8:00. They were going to start at 7:00, but they didn't start before, I had to go back home and go to work, but I came back out at lunchtime, and they were about halfway done with the road, and when I came back from lunch, they were on the other side of the road and grinding down the top part of asphalt, and I have some interesting pictures of that and the asphalt machines. The folks were very respectful and responsive, they had machinery that went along and cleaned up after the grinding process, and then had a guy out there with a broom that was carefully sweeping up what was left to clear everything out, and I thought that was very nice, and I talked to the guy who's the site supervisor, and he told me that the Tacoma Park Public Works staff had been out to coordinate with him and left information and ways to get ahold of them, and so I thought that was all a good sign. And he also told me that he thought that they would be able to dig the rest of the roadbed through the concrete tomorrow, and then before they left tomorrow, they hoped to have poured the 12 inches of concrete from one end to the other and to cover the road in metal plates, and then they would be gone for 24 hours, and they would come back the next day and remove the plates and start to pour the roadbed. So I made some inquiries about how residents would get in and out of their places if they hadn't happened to take the invitation to move their car around the corner, and he told me that if somebody needed to get out, that they would get a couple of metal plates and lay them across the access point so the people could get across. So that's going to be interesting, I think, but so I thought it seems better. I also took some pictures of the lot at the corner of Jackson and Ethan Allen, which is, I think, two lots that are residentially zoned, that continue to be used for commercial purposes. It's probably been 30 days since I last wrote to Valerie Urban about it, but I'm going to send her some of these photos, and what I noticed when I was out there today and actually walking on the lot is that when the U L S people were there, who are the utility line service people who did all the crazy stuff, they have actually put lots and lots of asphalt and rock down, really a heavy base of it, essentially they paved over now this commercial lot, and they paved back in and under the trees. So I took some pictures of that also, so that I can email that to the arborist and we can see if there are any tree issues there, but while I was out there, I talked to a resident who told me that the flea markets are really starting up on Saturday and Sundays, I'm not even sure it's the same people every weekend, people are just coming out with their carloads of stuff and laying it out there for impromptu garage sale at the corner. So if we could ask the police to keep looking for them and asking them to move along when they come and continue to pursue this commercial issue, that would be great.
Councilmember Wright.
Two quick things, one is the replacement of the Pepco poles. If we could follow up with Pepco, because I think they were doing some remaining work, getting close to being done in the neighborhood, but then telling residents that they had no control over when the other utilities come along and, you know, move their lines to new poles, which isn't totally true, because none of the utilities will do anything until Pepco's told them that they've done with their work, and then they can move the poles. So that was the first thing. The second thing is, I just want to say I will not be in person for the council meeting on the 13th of June. I'll be on vacation with my family, but happy to call in, and I look forward to doing that. I alerted the city clerk already so she can make the arrangements, and I think we're having an early session with Barb that day also, so I'll call into that if that works okay also. Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
I have a couple of things. I want to thank Ms. Daines for following up with the county on an inspection that needs to be done, but it brings up a point that this is someone who needed an inspection on a rental house, and the initial request was in April, and it kind of, so six weeks have passed before, and the inspection has not taken place, these are county, an inspection by a county inspector. And my constituent is unhappy that it has taken so long, and he was referred to the appropriate county inspector by our staff, and then there's now been a renewed reminder to the county staff person, but it shows that, in a way, it's good, that we've discussed this before, that we have the county who has a robust staff to do the inspections for us here in Tacoma Park, but this may be the other side, if they're really swamped and they don't get back, who do our constituents turn to? They have to go through a kind of a middle ground of our own staff who then refers them, and so I just wanted to bring that up for that point. Went to the T-Bolts, the Thunderbolts opening a couple nights ago, that was very nice for their picnic. I'm going to miss the ball toss this Saturday, I'll be unhappy about that, but I'm hoping that some of my colleagues will be out there tossing the opening pitch. That's our wooden bat league that works out of Blair, it's the Tacoma-Silver Spring Thunderbolts. I think that somebody sitting up here might be their treasurer, if I recall.
Might be.
It might be the mayor. In the music world, I went to the Everyday Gourmet last night for a little bit, that was their first night of open mic, and it's a pretty robust, it was packed, of course, unfortunately the air conditioning was out, but I'm sure it'll be back, and it was a good crowd, that may be my only time going there since Monday nights I'm here, but it was nice to see everyone there. Colleen, did you say that the lot where the people are parking or putting up their flea markets is a commercial lot?
No, it's a residential lot, and I think it's two residential lots, and we've been round and round with them in the county before, and actually the city attorney has evaluated this, and...
It's a commercial use of a residential lot?
It's a commercial use of a residential lot.
No, I'm with you. All right. And I was out, I went up 410 today, not remembering that it was the day, and then I realized quite quickly, and it was interesting to me that the traffic going east is, at the co-op, was rerouted down...
Woodland.
Woodland, and then to Elm and back out at Elm, and conversely, the traffic going westward was routed down Elm, I don't know where it went, because I avoided...
Lincoln and Boy.
Lincoln and Boy, I avoided it like the plague coming back, I went down Sligo Creek Parkway, but it wasn't too bad. And I also saw that buses were allowed to go on 410 so that they didn't have to negotiate the winding streets, I thought that was an interesting solution. I have two park issues, one is that I want to appreciate Corporal Corsi for looking into the Opal Daniels, the use of Opal Daniels at night. Apparently there's been heavy use late at night with some unfortunate glass being shattered on the asphalt or the concrete, and that, we don't need that kind of stuff, so I'm sure that they'll find a way to, anyone who's using there will find a way to look after the park when they're finished. And I also want to commit in public to my council members, to my fellow council members, that I am going to pursue honoring Gilbert Conbe at Tacoma Urban Park, and having met with Mary Bradford, the head of parks, and heard what she said, it's clear that she is willing, or they are willing, to dedicate a portion of the park to Gilbert Conbe, and I've talked with the folks at the Wacko Neighborhood Association, and they're fine with going in that direction, so I'll contact Mary and make good on the commitment she made and follow along that path. And that's it.
Okay, and I'll make sure that Captain Corsi doesn't wonder what happened if he got demoted to corporal.
I knew I would say, I knew, I stuck my foot in.
I knew something I did.
I knew I stuck my foot in when I said that, Captain Corsi.
And I've just got one thing I wanted to report on, and that is the wonderful time I had last Wednesday, I think, at Roland Terrace Elementary School on Career Day, I got to speak to six classes, two kindergarten, two first grade, and two second grade, about what's involved in being mayor of Tacoma Park. There were lots of interesting questions, some really interesting.
Give us an example.
Well, I'll just say that we got involved in a lot of math, and I found out that the second graders had done their divisions. And it was really interesting to have an opportunity to talk to so many students. When I asked them how many of them lived in Tacoma Park and how many of them lived in Silver Spring, I would say more of them lived in Tacoma Park than Silver Spring. I did not get into determining whether they lived in Tacoma Park zip code or Tacoma, city of Tacoma Park corporate boundaries, but on the other hand, some people who live in the city of Tacoma Park live in Silver Spring post office, so I just didn't get that detailed, but suffice it to say, it appeared that more than half of them live in Tacoma Park. So it was very interesting, they had that every year, and I encouraged them to look forward to participating in the If I Were Mayor contest every year, and to be ready to write an essay in fourth grade. I don't see any other council comments, so does the city manager have any comments?
Fortunately, the city manager's on vacation this week.
Well, but so, you get elevated tonight.
There you go. I just wanted to mention that the Tenacity Group reported that they don't have air conditioning in their facility. It's something that they had known was coming, they've got a new piece of equipment that was delivered last week, it's being installed, it's, the air conditioning should be on by Friday. They have requested, and we are accommodating, using the rec center as a cooling center for the residents in the tower. Housing has been working on this in every positive and other regulatory way that they need to, but I just wanted to report on that cooling center as a new item. That's all.
And I'm assuming no legislative update?
There's none.
Okay. And we don't have any minutes to adapt, so we will move to our presentation and work session, that's the first agenda item, and this is a presentation by the Emergency Preparedness Committee and discussion with the council. Welcome, everybody.
Thank you, good evening. We're here tonight from the Emergency Preparedness Committee to follow up a little bit on the discussion we had at the council in January. Council expressed more interest in emergency preparedness in regards to the city, and especially given the recent string of tornadoes, very devastating tornadoes across the US, and the fact that tomorrow is the start of hurricane season, just kind of, these sort of things are on people's minds, and we wanted to talk a little bit with the council. So first off, we have Robert Jones with Montgomery County Office of Emergency Management, Homeland Security, and we also have Captain Corsi with Tacoma Park. Thank you.
You can actually raise the whole thing.
Raise what?
Little button on your left.
Under your notebook.
This is so much fun.
So it isn't just the county who has the nice slide?
Hey, I'm not even allowed in the counties. Hi, I'm Bob Jones, I'm with the Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, and I want to thank you for allowing me to be a part of your Emergency Preparedness Council. I've been a member for just over four years now, and it is one of my favorite parts of my job. I meet a lot of great people, you have wonderful people here working on the committee, and I just wanted to share that with you, you have an awesome, awesome group, and it's one of the fun parts of my job.
Thanks, good to hear.
I have some, there's a slide packet in front of you, and what I'd like to do is, is we're going to go to the colored version, the simple version, it's a circle, that one, let's just go to that, and you can kind of follow along if you'd like. I like to go with keeping it simple, if you don't mind, and really kind of focus on what's important in emergency management and what we're doing here. And if you look at that chart, it basically, it describes the emergency management wheel, the disaster management, and what takes place, and you're looking at mitigation, the preparedness, the response, and the recovery. That's what we do in emergency management. So if you think about in a county, anywhere, local, state, federal level, you name it, we all use the same basic fundamentals here. There's no rocket science here, as a matter of fact, when I get done with this, you're going to say... gonna say, "I knew that." I'm not gonna be giving you a lot of new information, but when you see it packaged correctly, you're gonna say, "Now I know how it all works better," and you'll see how you can better support us with your guidance and leadership in the future. One of the things we start off with in emergency management is the mitigation planning process, is how do we go ahead and prevent, mitigate events taking place in the county that could harm our citizenry, or damage property, you name it. So we're always looking at how do we go ahead and mitigate disasters, if you wish. And one of the first things that we do in the emergency world, in the county, is the hazard mitigation plan. And then there, we identify what are the major, high, medium, and low level emergencies that could take place. So for example, dam breach. We had the Lake Needwood Dam, so there's a perfect example of why we now have dams as a high level risk factor, if you wish, within the county. So we're looking at high and medium level types of risks or events that take place within the county, it's something that we want to dedicate most of our time to, to prevent those types of things, or at least mitigate the impact of those types of disasters that take place. So dams, for example, acts of terrorism within the county, in the area, if you wish, because we're so close to Washington DC, you have hurricanes, tornadoes, we certainly know about the snowstorms, ice storms, and things like that are high in our county. So that's our first, first piece of work that we do, is the mitigation planning process, and we have a very thick document that really focuses on the hazard mitigation within the county. You go from there, and you look at what we know what we have to deal with, we know what the high risk factors are, then we need to look at the emergency operations plan. And this is our emergency operations plan. And everybody gets a copy that are within the, within the county, all the major departments, the agencies like WSAC, PEPCO, the municipalities. We had a large, large team of people working together to develop this emergency operations plan. That's where the planning process begins. So you got in the wheel, we have mitigation, we talk about the hazard mitigation plan, and then the emergency operations plan in the planning process. This plan is rather detailed, it breaks it down into how we go ahead in the concept of operations, and how we respond to emergencies. So during the preparedness phase of emergency, we're preparing the emergency operations plan. Along with this, we have job aids for all the various positions that we have within the Emergency Operations Center. We have checklists and other documentation that's out there, plus we have other tools that we use, and I'll get into that as we go into the response. So we spend a lot of time doing the emergency operations plan. I will say, as well as during the preparedness process, not only do we have people like Ed, I'm sorry, I should be saying Captain Corsi. Here, but, depending on who, depending on the time. But basically, a lot of people from the municipalities helped us do this. This was not done in a vacuum. And not only that, we also helped with the municipalities and their efforts to develop their emergency operations plan. The idea, let's think about it, is our emergency operations plan at the county level, the local level should fit right in, and vice versa. The same thing we do with the state, and then right up through to the federal level. And there is a nice little chart in the back where it shows you how the local, county fit right up into the state, go up to the federal level as well. As along with preparedness comes exercises and training. And as an example, last week and a half ago, we had our hurricane preparedness functional exercise. So that, you made it, didn't you, did you make it?
I didn't go.
You didn't go, okay.
Ed went.
Ed went, okay, I wasn't sure, there's so many people, we had the best attended Emergency Operations Center event ever, was that exercise, where we basically looked at a couple things. We looked at hurricanes, as well as dam, dam exercises as well, so we played the role of having some of the dams overtop, and look at evacuation processes as well. And that's gonna become a yearly event as well. But, so we're preparing, our preparedness for the hurricane season. In November, we start looking at preparing for the snow season, we work with the folks in transportation, as well as for the road clearing operations, and we work with them. So we look at the various events, and we create exercises and training events to go ahead and prepare as well. People are getting prepared, basically, they're called the Emergency Management Group, or EMG, if you hear that acronym. Tom, you said Andy, where's Andy? Did I stay away from using acronyms? But basically, in the Emergency Operations Center, we have an Emergency Management Group people. Ed and other municipality members are there, along with each department, many of the departments have seats within the Emergency Operations Center as EMG members. Now, if you look at your circle there, your little cycle, you got the event taking place, and basically, it could be a disaster. And what I'd like you to think about there is that it could, there's, basically, think of it as, there's prior notice, if you wish, a hurricane, it's kind of, you've got prior notice, you've got prior, you've got time to get ready for it, other things like that, snowstorms we can get prepared for. You also have events, like sometimes a water main break, or some of the activities that take in place, there's no notice, and we basically have to be called up to support it. And the third one, that's a little bit less thought of, but it does happen, is we have special events in this DC area. We have like the AT&amp;T golf outing, we have the inauguration where we activate an Emergency Operations Center, so sometimes we are there in event that something could take place. So sometimes we, maybe boring, but fortunately, if we leave after the day and it's over with and nothing happened, that's a good thing. So those are some special events that we do. Now, think about the hazards or the events, whether they're manmade terrorism, Mother Nature type events. We are basically prepared as Emergency Operations Center people, the Emergency Management Group people, to activate and go to the Emergency Operations Center and support the event itself. We use a lot of communications activities to do that. Typically, we use Alert Montgomery, and you have the...
Alert Tacoma, do you call it?
Same, same exact, the system we use to go ahead and call out people. So we activate people using that system, we can call them, we can use other means, we can use email, our BlackBerries, of course, and on and on. And basically, the first thing that comes out is we go ahead and we activate people. If it's a no notice event, we basically activate them and call in the people to come into the Emergency Operations Center, and we begin supporting the event. If there's something like a hurricane, we typically will have multiple conference calls a couple days before we decide whether we're not, we're gonna go into the Emergency Operations Center or not. So we're basically preparing, a lot of people get on those calls. Ed, a lot of the municipalities, PEPCO, you name it, are on these calls, and we're basically getting situational awareness, learning what's gonna take place for an event. Once that's taken place, and we do activate, we go to the Emergency Operations Center, basically, everybody reports to the Emergency Operations Center in Gaithersburg. Has anybody had a chance to go see our Emergency Operations Center? You have. I invite you, if you would love, anytime you'd like to come up, we've taken the Preparedness Committee, we've actually had a meeting up there before, if you'd like to come up, we'd be glad to take you around and show you the Emergency Operations Center. But we basically get in there, and we're broken down into emergency support functions, and that's another sheet that you have in there. And basically, what it is, is something like, you might have transportation, shelter task force, the law enforcement, you know, and you pull, like for example, law enforcement, which is an ESF, Emergency Support Function 13, includes Maryland State Police, the sheriff, corrections, park and planning police, Montgomery Police, Tacoma Park Police, all together. We have numerous seats within the Emergency Operations Center to support our response activities. We use multiple means of communicating with everybody to get the word out. We are in sync with providing reports to the senior executives in the county, as well as you have that capability, we provide support through Ed, through Tacoma Park, and you should be getting status reports as well. One of the major tools we use is Web EOC, which, I know I get the grin out of you. Web EOC is a tool that we use, it's a system tool where you can capture all the information that's taking place, so you can have official requests for support, whether it's, you need vehicles down here for snow removal, you need additional piles, you need additional assets from the county. Those requests can go through from the Tacoma Park, via their person that's sitting in the EOC, or if they can't make it because they need to be here, they can still do those requests through the Web EOC, or picking up the phone, and they can get those requests for support from the county. The county has a ton of resources to provide support, but we did learn during the winter storm that we didn't have everything, and we did have to go to the state to request Humvees from the military, from the National Guard, dump trucks, graders, you name it, all kinds of equipment to come in here to help us during snow removal operations. So if we can't get the equipment, or the personnel, or resources, could be public health related people, you name it, or additional police resources, we can go to the state and request additional support. As well as we have memorandums of understanding in the area, various other counties, the DC government, and Virginia as well. But think about, when we have a major storm or something that takes place, usually, we're not gonna get a lot of support from our local counties nearby, because they need their own resources. So many times, you'll see, like what PEPCO, they've said in the past, where they've gone to New Hampshire, or not New Hampshire, North Carolina, Pennsylvania, and other states to get resources to come in and to help with the debris removal and getting the power back up. So we have those types of contacts with other organizations, going to the state to get resources. So communications, when it comes to the municipality, though, to bring it back home, is Tacoma Park has a seat in the Emergency Operations Center, they have access to Web EOC, they can request support, they can coordinate with us, they are part of all the exercises and training, they're part of the preparedness right down the line, and if you need something, we can work with Tacoma Park to provide those resources, and if we don't have them, we know how to get them to the state. There are, yeah, the thing that we do with the Web EOC is we do a lot of situation reporting through that. We make sure that we provide those reports to our senior executives, the CAO, the assistant CAO, and even our county executive, as needed, to keep them informed of what's going on. We also have the capability, provide visibility into Web EOC for those who like it, and we know we have a few people within your government that does have that support capability. We did provide you an acronym's list, if you would like to go ahead and memorize them, please feel free to do so. We did show you, I did talk about the incidents and the, there's emergency support functions, and here's a listing. It basically is a way of breaking down the organizations within the Emergency Operations Center to interface with the state. The state has ESS, or Emergency Support Functions as well, and they orient their EOC, Emergency Operations Center, in this fashion, so that if we have an activity that's related to logistics and we need supplies, ESF-7, Emergency Support Function 7, they can coordinate with the ESF-7 at the state, and we create that kind of dialogue, and we can go through and get requests back and forth, and get support that way. At the, and the same thing goes back to the Tacoma Park via Web EOC, we can honor tasks as well through the Web EOC as a tool. We do have this chart here as the, and I can see this one, it does kind of show you in a nutshell, everything starts at the local level, incident command, everything that is supported, you've heard that FEMA says we're here to support, it's the same thing at our level. If there's something that takes place in Tacoma Park, the best people to respond to and that event are the people that live here, the people that have worked here. What you don't have sometimes is all the resources that you need to respond, and that's where we come in to provide that types of support for you. So we have a very good working relationship with Ed and his crew, and they, they're really up to speed on everything that we do in Emergency Operations Center. I can tell you, from a municipality perspective, he's at everything, at every event, and we have a very good working relationship with you all in Tacoma Park. And I think your Emergency Preparedness Committee is also a wonderful way of keeping in the loop. I find that to be a breath of fresh air, to see the types of things that take place during that. It really helps from the community outreach activities that we've done, to the fairs, people, Andy, like going to the Jazz Fest and passing out brochures and getting the word out to your people, because it's very important to make sure that your folks, as many of them as possible, get to understand that they've got to take care of themselves as well. And we do quite a bit for community outreach, public service announcements and things like that in your committees. You're very well organized in Tacoma Park, and it's an honor to be supporting you. I would like to turn it over to you.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna wrap up this section of the presentation, just kind of bringing it home to Tacoma Park, about how we fit into all what Bob just explained. If you look at that chart that has the big green arrow on it, if you will, there's a little box off to the right that says local to local mutual aid. And I guess if I was better at working on this chart, I would have added this in before I printed it up for you all, but I would have drawn in there maybe something that said Department Operations Center, something like that. And that's primarily a term that the county would use. For instance, their transportation people might have their own operations center, and it would be feeding information into the Montgomery County EOC as you had an emergency. Well, the thing that we have that's similar to that, and you heard Wolfgang Mergner and I present on this end of last year before council, is what we call the Tacoma Park EOC. And that's a concept, of course, in our emergency operations plan, that has the city manager bringing together information from their department heads and gathering information so that they have situational awareness of what's happening here in Tacoma Park, and it would be feeding information to whoever from the city was representing the city in the Montgomery County EOC. And that might be, we've got a little better capabilities now than we had maybe two, three years ago, but I know I'm trained on it, Suzanne's trained on it, one of the police employees, Jack Van Wagenen, is trained, and we have another couple other people in the police department as well that are trained. We're trying to broaden our horizons a little bit into some of the other departments, because potentially, there are other types of emergencies that might not be, you know, a primary police mission. One of the handouts that I handed out, that's in your package there, is one that's titled Table Three, Designated Primary Agencies. And the only reason I threw that in there was, you could scan down that real quick, you can get an idea of different types of emergencies, and you can see, under the county's EOP, this is actually out of the county EOP, what agency is responsible for managing, being the lead agency in managing that. So you'll see there aren't a lot of, the police department's not written in there very often. The most prominent player there is Fire and Rescue Services, which of course, you know, the city doesn't have its own fire department. So that's why many of the emergencies that we engage in are gonna be led by the county as far as who's gonna be in charge of the incident. Other than that, I think we've touched on just about everything we want to cover in that part of the presentation, except training, right? There is, is one thing we wanted to talk very, very briefly about, and that was the level of training that the city employees, particularly first responder employees in the city have undergone. FEMA offers a number of online courses, actually, quite a few online courses today, but there were four major ones that city employees have engaged in. And we're gonna send you all a link maybe tomorrow, and you can go to that link, and we're gonna recommend that if you're interested in emergency management issues, there's probably one or two of those courses might be very useful to you to, to get kind of a foundation of emergency management principles. The first one would be there, the IS-100 course, which is Basic Incident Command. And Incident Command is the terminology we use to describe how we would command and control an incident, whether it be here, whether it be in Northern Virginia, whether it be in Alaska, wherever in the country that's using these principles uses this incident command structure. And that way, you can have mutual aid provided to an organization, and people will know where they fit into the command structure, who they're taking orders from. So Incident Command is the fundamental building block of all emergency management in the United States at this point. One of the other courses that you might want to take is the IS-700, IS-800, and we'll wrap all that into the email, but that'll give you a basic knowledge of things like the national response framework, or the national, national incident management system. They're pretty easy courses, I don't think you need to take all four of them, you might be wasting too much of your time to do that, but if you took one or two of them, I think you'd get a very good understanding about emergency management. That being said, I guess I will turn it back over to Jennifer.
All right, I'm gonna bring this down, just a little, maybe. Okay. And I also have to apologize, I introduced my colleagues, but I did not introduce myself. I'm Jennifer Kurtanitis, I'm the community co-chair for the Emergency Preparedness Committee. So the next piece, we just wanted to have, I guess, an informal discussion with you all. First, did anybody have any questions regarding the information Bob and Ed had shared with you?
Colleen, did you have questions?
I have more general questions.
Okay.
Until we get to the general discussion.
Well, why don't we lead off with that, then? You said you had a couple general?
Yeah. I'd like to hear a little bit about any work that emergency preparedness, any emergency preparedness activities related to mitigation and PEPCO, since, you know, if you think about what affects Tacoma Park residents the most recently, besides, you know, flooded basements when we have torrential rains, it's really downed power lines. So I'd like to hear about that. And I'd like to hear about, given the fact that Maryland is essentially a state that's driven by county governments and not city governments, and we often have challenges sort of with basic understanding of the relationship between city and county government, I just wonder what that's gonna be like in an emergency, and whether or not Montgomery County recognizes its responsibility as the county entity for the area of Tacoma Park, and how we're negotiating the kinds of things that we'll be working with in... we're negotiating the kinds of things that we'll be working with and dealing with and interfacing with vis a vis the county. Will we be run over by them? Will we be sort of left on our own by them? You know, how's that all working out?
Okay. Why don't we take the easy one first?
Don't tell me PEPCO's the easy one.
No. I don't know how to say it, except for the fact is that when we're doing emergencies in that Emergency Operations Center, Emergency Management Group, we're looking at the whole county. In fact, I mean, there's, there really is no delineation at all saying, oh, that's Tacoma Park's issue. We're out there addressing the county, period. There is no, oh, that's Chevy Chase, that's Gathersburg, Rockville, or Tacoma Park. We don't separate them out. There are times where there are things that have to take place within the city first. But because we have the Ed and other representatives from the municipalities there, right with us, working, there's not like a second, you know, gap with, you know, we need, and we're right there. So I would never worry about not getting support from the Emergency Operations Center as far as, you know, how we view our jobs. We're there to support the incident commanders out there. If the incident is taking place in Tacoma Park and there are incident commanders there, if it's large enough for the Emergency Operations Center to open up and support, we will certainly do that. But I don't see any differentiating, differentiation at all. We are just one county supporting all of the county. Is that fair to you?
Yeah. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Some issues are coming, we're becoming aware of that do involve kind of the independence of the city. Traditionally, as you know, our police department has operated fairly independently from the Montgomery County Police. But also, when we are involved in a major operation, our resources are very easily overwhelmed. Very frequently, we combine our operation with Montgomery County Police. In the EOC, we've seen a number of issues come up, particularly transportation-related issues. When you talk about maintaining the streets, particularly during a snow emergency, Tacoma Park does its own thing and does its thing very well, as a matter of fact. So you see, that's kind of an independent operation. But we are working better with transportation officials in Montgomery County to share information because even here in the city, we have streets that are maintained by multiple entities. So it's always a matter of gathering together all of the information and making sure it's being taken care of. And that's the strength of having somebody in the Montgomery County EOC is if they need a city resource, and frequently they will, if it's talking about maintaining a street or clearing a street, clearing a right of way, we'll be right there and they'll be able to tap into us and get that accomplished. Two other areas that we'll be working on this year that definitely have a local responsibility, if you will, are going to be debris management and damage assessment, both of which we're going to be engaging with a person that the state has hired actually to assist us with some planning issues. We'll be working on exercising some issues and working out debris management MOUs, things like that, so that we have the nuts and bolts worked out of those issues. But it's all about working together because as you see, when you pull together a group of people in the EOC, it's far more resources than the city would ever be able to devote to anything. So it's very much a team effort. And as long as the team is working together and includes the city, we can get it accomplished.
Well, let me tell you two areas where I see this being a challenge in particular to Tacoma Park. And one is ESF6, and I guess the other is, I think two is communications, the other is ESF2. So let's talk about communications first. Like, I haven't seen a communications task list come to the council members about what their role and responsibility is in communications in a disaster. And I think that's something that all of the council members should have. What I think is interesting about having a city within the county is that if you live in the unincorporated area of the county, you sign up for whatever the county's alert systems are and those kinds of things. Now, there are people, like I bet Kay and her brother are both signed up for all of the alert systems for Montgomery County, the city of Tacoma Park, the state, and the federal government. But there are a bunch of people in Tacoma Park who are just signed up for the Tacoma Alert. A bunch of people in Tacoma, most people in Tacoma Park aren't even signed up on Tacoma Alert, but they're on these local listservs, which if you wanted to go to a place where you had somebody who had access to those, you would go to the council. Now, the police department regularly posts on ones that are open, but not all of them are open. And so if the communications infrastructure and the internet is up and you want to be able to communicate with people, probably the council members are going to be part of your communication network, and you're going to want to be able to do that. And one of the things that I have done in my ward is I have not been the principal poster to the Long Branch Lido listserv and the Saskia and the Forest Park and the Woodland Avenue listserv. And I've done that intentionally so that there is an infrastructure of people in my ward that post regularly the city information reports and the crime reports, and they have a backup. So I can post them. In an emergency, I could post to that. But it's essentially forced for people to get information. It's forced people in the community, these volunteers in the community then, to be part of that information system. And it has helped, I think, build a structure in Ward 2 to help facilitate that where they're in an emergency. So one thing I would like to see is essentially just a task list for the council members around communication. The other thing that I see becoming an issue in Tacoma Park is, let's say we have an emergency where people are snowbound. And Tacoma Park has housed all of our police and public works people who live more than snowwalking distance from the city in the local motel, so that we have plowed our streets, we've cleared our streets. But we have power outages all over the place. And so we have people who are in, you know, essentially cold homes. This happened in my ward. I had people who were in cold homes. They weren't about to go to whatever, Richard Montgomery or wherever it was, the county shelter was. I'm not sure they could have gotten there even if, because they couldn't, the county streets weren't really plowed, they couldn't really, they couldn't get there, they wouldn't go there. And they're expecting mask care services here in the city of Tacoma Park. And we've essentially said, no, we're not going to run mask care services here at the shelter. But I think it's something that we should think about in certain emergencies, especially emergencies where the city is actually better able to provide mobility within the city and where in the county it might be safer for somebody to stay in their home because they essentially, you can't travel or there's downed power lines, you have those other problems. But the city has cleaned that up, and we have people who might actually be better in some sort of, you know, congregate care and food and sheltering system than they might be in their own homes, which, you know, by the third night are 40 degrees. In the last snowstorm that we had, I was taking my neighbor hot water bottles and food. And he's really, you know, he's in his mid-90s and he's incredibly proud and did not want to take anything from me. But, you know, I brought it over anyway because he wanted to be independent. But he might have actually come to the community center because that's, you know, that's the government providing it. It's more of a structure and it's less of somebody having to give him something, but something, you know, that would be, have been a safer place. And he was freezing cold by the third night. So those are a couple of things I think that are, because it's specific to Tacoma Park being a city and some of our capabilities where I think it behooves the county to think about how they interface with us and for us to make a plan for how we interface with the county around those issues.
Okay.
And then you have the hard question there.
I don't have a lot to give you. I can only tell you what I do know. There was a task force put together headed up by my boss, Chris Voss, on behalf of Tom Street, the ACAO at the county. And they had a number of people were brought in to work on analysis of all of the issues that have arisen with PEPCO. I know that report, I don't know, I believe the report was done, if I remember correctly, it was presented to the county council. I can't tell you any more than that because I have not seen the report. But I know that that, I'm pretty sure that report was given to the council as well as it is back to PEPCO. And it was a rather large undertaking because there's, our training room was used for many weeks, and that's what they were working on. I can't tell you the status.
It'd be good for the city to hear about that because I, is Josh here? Josh might say, our Ward 1 council member might say that the PEPCO mitigation plan for Tacoma Park is to butcher every tree that they find that's within, you know, 30 feet of a power line. But I'd like to, I'd like to hear from them what their, you know, what their mitigation plan is and be able to work with them. So if that's something that the county is doing to work with the mitigation plan for PEPCO that works for the county, that might be the same mitigation plan that works for the residents of Tacoma Park.
We can see if we can get a copy of that.
You're fine with that? I'll go back and ask, I can get a report and I'll get it back to Ed.
And if I can just add on, council member, please, easier question. That my recollection of one of the things that the council was looking for the last time the committee reported to us was to get a better sense of opportunities that the council might have for understanding, not just the online training courses, to understand the process, but to maybe have an opportunity to understand the ways in which we can coordinate better on the communication question. So that the scenario that comes to mind for me is something happens in the city and you can, you've seen instances where the county executive, you know, is in front of the microphone with the county's police chief and something is going on, and where that messaging is coordinated and clear and where there might be an opportunity for the same type of thing to happen if it happened in Tacoma Park. I think the messaging has, there have been times when our police chief was front and center. But in different types of incidents, it might require the council members, myself, to be involved in something like that and to have an understanding of how that works prior to being essentially thrust into that position.
I think the, we all think back to that February snowstorm, February 2010 snowstorm. And there were a lot of lessons learned out of that internally as well as externally. One of the things that we would like to do better if we were faced with a similar type situation would be to have more regular communication. And I think that's probably the key with the council. I think you were probably in need of some more regular updates, and we were in need of having more face time with you all as far as getting information from you, the specific information. We heard through the storm a lot of anecdotal information about people freezing in their homes, but when we pressed for specific information, that was never forthcoming. So I think one of the key things that we could get from the council, because you are in very good touch with your constituents, if you have specific information about people who are in need, that you funnel that information through the city manager so that it gets the right people.
Yeah. I think we just need the way to understand what, how we can help what types of things you need and to not be just a general kind of OG, if you have information, get it to us, but maybe the opportunity to talk about that more in depth and how that might work.
Right. I think through regular communication updates, then maybe the information would be available to you about what specific type of information we're looking for.
Good. Thanks. Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, one of, is this number one? Okay. One of the things that I'm, I've always been troubled by going back for several years to when I served on the Public Safety Citizens Advisory Committee because some of these questions came up in that committee. And Bob, in case you're wondering what I'm talking about, that's a committee that we got rid of, no longer have it.
They couldn't replace you, right? They couldn't replace you, so they had to.
Yes, that's right. The question that's always concerned me has to do with, I guess, some of the stuff that's sort of been addressed sort of a little bit here so far. And that is, how do we communicate all this information of what's going on to our citizens? We, in normal times, when everything, the wires are up, the sun is shining, we do a lot of communication by modern technology. But in times of disaster, part of the disasters are always that the communications or parts of the communication systems are non-functional, whether it's power lines down or cell phone towers out or whatever. And some of our citizens aren't plugged into the great network of electronic communication. Now, you know, we have everything in this area from tornadoes rare, but, you know, it wasn't that long ago we had one whip through College Park and kill a couple college students, the remnants of which you can probably still see today if you knew where to look. We had 9/11, which scared the living daylights out of everybody within 100-mile radius of Washington, D.C., and created, you know, close to panic. And then we had the big snowstorms two winters ago. And all of those presented totally, I mean, you know, the snowstorms, you kind of knew they were coming, but we got overwhelmed. The thing that happened on 9/11 was just utterly unprecedented. Tornadoes are the kind of thing that you were mentioning, these are the no notice, no prior notice kind of incidents. And what people want to be able to know is what's happening and what am I supposed to do? Am I safe where I am? Do I need to be doing something? And who is it that knows what it is I need to find out? I remember during, as an example, during the height of the blizzard, I'd only been on the city council like two or three, two months or something. And I was trying to find out what was going on, and I was sort of in my car trying to make my way as best I could to get around. I thought, oh, well, I'll turn on Tacoma cable and see what they're telling us. And what it was, was a little taped show about farm animals. And I thought, you know, this is really, it really made me angry, to be honest. I thought, this, you know, here we got cable television and it's completely out the lunch. Might as well have been non-operative for all the good it was doing any of us. But that would have been a logical place for citizens. Most people have televisions. Not everybody has computers or high-technology smartphones. But, you know, it wasn't there. When you read about tornadoes in the Midwest, these towns have sirens. And when I was a young man, many of us, the older among of us, can remember the days when every Monday at 11:00 a.m. the city would test its sirens and everybody could sort of set their watches by them. I guess that all came with, you know, the wars about nuclear war attacks and air raid things. It's a very low-tech kind of a thing to warn people that something's coming now. Today, we get, if you're on your email during the day, you'll get an email from the city police department saying that severe storms are predicted for late this afternoon, you couldn't, you know, there could be a possible tornado. And so, you know, you may pay attention to that or you may not. But otherwise, unless you happen to be looking out your window or you've got the television on, there's no real pattern to know, how am I, as Joe, Joe's citizen, supposed to find out what's going on? Is this really a severe thing that I need to be doing something about? And I know that emergency preparedness is sort of a maddening kind of a thing because you know there's going to be a disaster, you know, whether it's a collision or wreck on Metro, that this case happened to be in, you know, just south of us, or, you know, what was it, a year, year and a half ago when that happened? Or what it's going, I mean, we can all play this, I wouldn't hate to call it a game because it's not really a game, of trying to anticipate what it could be. The frustrating, the one common denominator, and I've said this before, to all these disasters is communication. And this system here is obviously an excellent thing that's set up so that the first responders can do their job, you know, and everybody can coordinate whether, you know, because we're right here in the juxtaposition of Prince George's County and Ward 6 abuts that and Ward, some of the other wards are bump up against the District of Columbia. That's a really complicated thing. And this goes a long way to solving that. And I have really no questions or challenges about that at all. I just think what you're doing there is great. But I guess I'm worried more about the, what's underneath all that in terms of what I've been talking about, just the individual people who live in the city and want help. And like in the blizzards, two winters, winter four last, we had the same, this problem of people. of people being frozen out of their homes that were without power for, oh, close to four days. And what I did was just go to those people's houses, walk however I could get to them and knock on the doors and find out if they were okay. Pretty low-tech kind of stuff because there wasn't any other way to, to talk to you. I just sort of found people telling me things and it was sort of rescue by anecdote. And, you know, various people were managing. As it turned out, things fine. But, but I just worry about the elderly and the people that, you know, all that sort of thing. And I know you do too. I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, so I don't mean to imply that at all. It's, it's just, you know, that some, we could have used, would have been great if this community center could have been set up and prepared as a place for people to retreat to, for warming. And at the time that, you know, we talked about that in the middle of this and we realized that this was not something we were at any way prepared to do at this location. And now today I find out we have a cooling center at the recreation of a building for folks in the, in the high-rise who don't have any air conditioning, a brand-new, fully-renovated building. People haven't even sold most of the units yet and their system's already breaking down. These are the kind of things that we need to be able to help people know that these, that the resources exist. So I guess it's sort of a low-tech side of things that I'm kind of anxious about and have been for quite some time. And I'd really be interested in learning of what you're thinking, to whatever extent your thinking is going in that general direction.
I think that the two main sources of communication that we're prepared to do is having the message get out through some sort of mass media and the other would be using things like electronic media, either email or text messaging. And we dovetail into the county's operations very much on both of those fronts. The TP Alert system that you're probably familiar with, getting local alerts, is actually linked to the Montgomery County system. So a lot of the weather information that comes across TP Alert is, is actually coming from a sender in Montgomery County, sending it to the Montgomery County system and it's re-broadcast over the TP Alert system. But we also take the same message, once the message is crafted, it's easy to kind of repeat it in other, other means, we send that out by email. So the TP Alert system touches about 2,000 subscribers in the Tacoma Park area, maybe not all of them residents, but still, it's a pretty good, pretty good amount of coverage. It also hits emails for those recipients. But we also have another email network that Kathy Fleby generally sends information on. And a lot of times she will, you might get both messages unfortunately, but she might be rebroadcasting it, something that came over TP Alert, sending it out through the email listservs. We appreciate that, that maybe you can't always post to those or repost to those. Not all the listservs are probably plugged into that network, but I think it's pretty robust and I think it hits a lot of people in the city.
It does.
Where it falls shy and where, where the committee has talked about many times, the Emergency Preparedness Committee has talked about, you know, what do you do when the infrastructure for all that is down? And in those cases, we would, we would be relying heavily on people looking out for their neighbors. A lot of that occurred during the February snowstorm. I know certainly, certainly many of the council members were doing that, but I also know many, many members of the community were also taking information that we sent out and going out on their own initiative, checking the people that lived to either side, across the street, down the street, what have you, and checking on people's welfare. And that's what, that's what needed to happen. The return information would be that we would want to collect up information where people were in life-threatening situations and they needed the intervention of the government. As far as the, using this building or any city facility as a, as a shelter, very complex issues. The management of shelters is even far more complex than I had ever imagined. I've been to a couple of trainings within the last six months that dealt with issues about ADA and various, various other issues that impact the management of shelters. The county has, and in fact, you're, you're looking at some people involved in that, has very professional capabilities to manage shelters, but doesn't have infinite resources either. So standing up a shelter is a very, it's a labor-intensive operation, probably not easy for them to open up shelters in 10 or a dozen places throughout the county. So during these snowstorms, they tend to, tended to pick centralized locations, up county, mid-county, and down county, pick the centralized location. And in fact, the response to those locations was not great. So what that really would tell us was there weren't a lot of people that were willing to leave their home to go stay in a community center, in a, in a big room with a bunch of people and lose your privacy and so forth, to do that. More often than not, people would either go to neighbors or they would go to hotels, hotels filled up in the area, but they would avail themselves of those operations. Now, the police department lobby is open 24/7, is generally heated or air-conditioned, sometimes not to our satisfaction, but generally heated or air-conditioned. People are welcome to come down there at any time. It is one, one of the facilities in the community that's open 24/7. So encouraging people to do that, should they feel they're in a life-threatening situation, is a message we would want to get out a little quicker and a little heavier than we did during the February snowstorms. But that's obviously something that they could avail themselves of. Using the city's other facilities, the rec center on New Hampshire Avenue, for instance, is another option for such a thing. The problem there is you have limited abilities to, to deal with people's needs. There could be security issues where you have people in conflict at those facilities. So you need staff to be, to be there, to be present, to help manage that effort. And that takes resources.
Yeah, just the only follow-up comment I would make is that I think that, that we need to figure out a way to recruit citizens into this so, so that we have a network of people throughout the city whose job may, may never be called upon, may never be called upon to exercise their training. Hopefully that would be the case, but if they were, they would, they would be, know that they were part of a system, you know, this command structure you were saying. I mean, I see that we have the command structure among the professionals, the salaried people, highly-trained, sophisticated and all that. I just, I think that command structure probably, we need to figure out a way to make it filter down. In the old-timey days, people just naturally looked out after their neighbors. They don't do that these days. Some people do, but not, not to the extent that I think we would want to see.
I know we talked about CERT, Community Emergency Response Team at our last meeting and that's, I can't remember if before that, we had the class, was it Last Fall? So we have, we're trying to help bring CERT more to Tacoma Park, which would help a little bit with some of that because that is, in the community, people who are trained and are taking ongoing training. So it's, it's a little start and we're trying to help promote that through the committee. Managing and working with volunteers is, is a very, it's an ongoing process. And it's, you know, it, it takes a lot of work and a lot of, a lot, a lotta. It's probably the easiest way to say it. My day job is with the American Red Cross and I help manage the disaster volunteers for Montgomery County. So I would be happy to talk a little more on some of these topics offline, I know we're probably running short of time.
I'd welcome that. Thank you.
Okay. Certainly be happy to. But it's, you know, we're trying to figure out where throughout communities, especially in Tacoma, that we can help develop some of that support. So it's, we are taking it into consideration and trying to, to work on that. So we'd love to work with the council as well on that too.
Thanks. I got four more colleagues who have comments or questions. Councilmember Snook.
Thank you, Mayor. I had a couple, I know I'd raised this before, I wondered what you thought about it. There, depending on, you know, this is a great variety of emergencies and situations that involve very different organizations, they involve different recovery, preparation, mitigation, all the things you were talking about. What I didn't see was, we did talk, you've heard comments about whether the council's role, and I'm going to say a little more about that in a minute, but the other we didn't talk about is the role of businesses. During the snowstorm in particular, it became important for the local, I'll call them grocery stores, small corner stores and so on, to make sure they had food. And knowing which ones did and didn't have food would have been a kind of useful thing. And it's one of the things that happened in my neighborhood was people would say, oh, well, this store's out of milk, but this other one has milk, you know, that kind of thing, you know, kind of the staples, this one has bread, this one doesn't, water, whatever it might be. And I think that there would be a role in emergency preparedness for some communication with the local businesses like grocery stores, hospitals, hotels we were just talking about, that have a role in helping out, not necessarily immediately after the incident, but in the kind of recovery period, you know, they would, they would need to be involved, at least informed and so on. So I was hoping that you would do a little bit of work of figuring out how that all fits together. The one thing that we haven't brought up about the council's role was one that we started, I thought we started down and I thought Councilmember Clay was moving in that direction and that was how to communicate better with the informal network of citizens who are out there and who do look after their neighbors. There's a number of closed listservs, as you called them, that do not receive Kathy's notices. And then I know in my ward, we don't have any public ones, we have all closed ones. And so we post, somebody has to post to those, that kind of thing. So it would be useful to spend a little time, as you indicated you'd like to, talking about what the council's role in a couple of these fairly likely situations. You don't want to start with the, you know, really unusual ones. You want to start with the, you know, we have snowstorms frequently, you know, that's a classic. We unfortunately have power outages. That's a fairly common one. It's things like that where it might be useful to spend a little bit of time talking about, you know, what, how the council can work with you, how can you can work with the council, what our role might be. We can, each of us share how that might work in any particular incident so that we can be more prepared. We can give you feedback, you can give us feedback. That's kind of what I was looking for on those, on those two things.
We'll put them on our list and see what we can do to work towards them.
Thank you.
Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you for coming. It's a great presentation and I continue to be reassured. And I don't have much to add in, in the way of questions for how you're doing your work. I'm, I keep learning when you come and I hope you come back. The one comment I will make is that, how impressed I am that the, that the city and the county are working together in that way. And what comes to mind is how we can take some of the lessons there and, and translate them to the non-emergency interactions between our city and the county and the way services are provided here. I mean, you're providing certain services, thoughtful services, and then in a moment of need, specific services. And there must be something we can learn about how the general services are provided. So thanks for coming.
I think that's a great point and I'll just make a point about my career here. When I started here in 1989, and am I kidding you about this, a patrol officer could face disciplinary action if he was caught outside of the city. And we've come a long way since that. And I'm very enlightened and I'm very encouraged by my experiences working with the Montgomery County Emergency Management Group. It's, it's all about cooperation and it does trickle down into day-to-day things. A little, little less tangible, but it, it is trickling down and we're making a difference in that way.
Thanks for that point.
Councilmember Snook.
Thanks, Mayor. I think Captain Corsi was a corporal when.
Oh, wait a minute. I made a mistake.
I wasn't a corporal that morning.
When he always assured me that the county was going to take care of us, don't worry about it, we don't have to be too prepared here in Tacoma Park because in an emergency, the county's going to really step in and do the job. I'm really glad to see that we've grown beyond that now and that, yes, the county's going to be there to, to help in an emergency, but that the Tacoma Park Police are coordinating very well with the county to work collaboratively should an emergency arise. But I, and I'm not going to belabor the points that have been made. I think the, the one thing I hear though is that, that you've made suggestions that we, that the council maybe consider taking some of the training that FEMA offers. I've had the opportunity to do that and I know that, you know, some of the things that the training talks about is how, you know, council members should communicate during an emergency. But what I would like to see the committee doing is not saying, hey, guys, if you want to do that, you know, go to the training. I would like to see some recommendations that say, you should be taking this training and we should be having some exercises. You should know as council members, you should know that these are the things that we're going to be asking you during an emergency. And it isn't just council members. I mean, we're easy to pick on because we don't do much anyway, so we might as well be volunteering for the emergency preparedness. But, but there are other people in the community who have, can have other valuable roles in an emergency and it would be nice to have those defined now rather than, since this is a planning committee, rather than waiting until the emergency arises to say, wouldn't it be nice to know where everybody in a wheelchair resides or whatever the, the information is that we would want to know? And so I think I'm glad to see the areas that you've presented where we've grown. I think that we've been working at this for an awful long time and I would like to see some of the, some of the planning for different roles for community members. And I would say that, yes, it is difficult to organize volunteers, but when I look at the council and kind of the volunteering opportunities that you see for council members and the kind of lack of progress on even organizing that, I would say we probably have some, some steps that we could take for other community members too that would push the ball ahead. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray.
Well, Captain Corsi, since you were called a corporal, I'm going to call you general for the remainder of the night, just to give you a little promotion. I, I'm going to be real quick. On the PEPCO plans, I definitely want to see what, you know, as Councilmember Clay and others have, have asked, that I want to see and understand that plan because it does feel like it's just chop the trees down and not much else. On the centers in terms of like locations, to me, it's not the city should open up the community center to be a warming center. Residents pay taxes to the city of Tacoma Park and they pay taxes to the county and county provides a certain set of services. If we want the city to provide every service the county provides, the tax rate's going to go up even higher, right? So.
They'll give us a giant rebate.
No, it's only if it's things that they would.
Want to.
Right, exactly. So, so to me, it's not, the question's not should the city be opening up the community center? The question is then whether county, where are the locations of your facilities and is there, you know, is there an opportunity to locate something in those disaster situations in Tacoma Park? And I think there was some discussion about whether any of the schools could fulfill that function. I think you have to have working bathrooms and showers. I'm not sure about eating facilities, but the, the schools have those. And my question would be, we are in a bit of a population, you know, a place that has more dense population, particularly on parts of Maple Avenue or out by the crossroads. Is there a more suitable location where the county could pay for and have a facility here? And that's the kind of proactive discussion I think the, the county and the city should, should try and undertake.
We've spent a fair amount of time on this and I think we've covered a lot of ground and I think we've got some further homework assignments for the committee and for the council. And we'll look forward to the next opportunity to chat about more issues.
There is one last issue, just, it would only take a moment to go over. We currently have two spaces, two open spaces on the committee and we are trying to recruit for, for more residents, specifically from Wards Four, Five, and Six. We do not have any representation right now from those wards and would. We do not have any representation right now from those wards, and would certainly welcome from any ward, but would love to see some folks from, from those areas. And we actually will, we'll be sending you an email with the training stuff and some of these other issues. And we have an email that's been put together that can be forwarded to residents, and would love to have you all pass that along.
Yes.
Thank you all very much for your time this evening.
Thank you all very much.
General.
We'll take a short break, and we'll come back for our special session item on the Washington Adventist Hospital's CLA. Item off just by noting that there's been, I guess, a sense among some people that, that there might be a land use plan for the hospital, it's been discussed by the council, and that a plan may already have been approved by the city or the planning board. And just to point out that the council has been focusing on discussions on the health needs of Tacoma Park, and that we have not had any land use plan discussions or consideration or approval. So just to make sure that everybody understands that before we start this item. Does the deputy city manager want to introduce this one?
Gee, actually, I was going to let the city attorney do that.
Okay, well, I gave it to you, and you handed it to her, so.
That's fine, thank you. Very briefly, we've been working on this issue for several years now, and the hospital said it would be moving in 2005, and of course galvanized the concern that our community has about what, what that would mean. And now there's a formal process in front, in front of the Maryland Healthcare Commission that will be adjudicating the question of whether a certificate of need will be granted to the hospital, allowing it to relocate from its over 100-year residence in Tacoma Park to, to White Oak. What we've provided in the packet, as you can see, is a resolution for the city council's consideration, which the bottom part of it is very important, asking that certain conditions be put on any grant if the relocation petition is approved by the commission. And the reason for that is that those conditions would then be enforceable by the commission, which is important to the city. And so we want the council to decide which conditions are and what they should say. And then also included in the packet is a very brief report by an expert that we've been working with, Nancy Lane, who is a brilliant healthcare analyst, who's been providing a great deal of information to all of us working on this issue, and she tried to lay out some of the overview in the report that's attached, which I hope is helpful to both the council and the community.
We have a resolution that lays out those points. Maybe I'll just go through it real quick, just to make sure that people know what they are. The first one is that Adventist Healthcare must prepare an operating plan and commit sufficient capital resources to provide continuing broad-based 24-hour primary urgent care and related diagnostic support services at the Tacoma Park campuses, campus. Second, that Adventist Healthcare must develop an organized structure to continuously address the healthcare needs of the city, such as the proposed Village Advisory Council. And then a number of stipulations about what we would like the Village Advisory Council to look like, that it be a permanent entity rather than sunsetting in five years, as proposed in the CLA application, that it include at least 50% of its membership from persons appointed by the city council, rather than only two out of the 17, and that it commence operations within 60 days of granting a certificate of need, rather than upon the relocation of LA as proposed in the CLA application. Third, that Adventist Healthcare would require that all healthcare provider tenants at the Tacoma Park campus provide a charity care policy equivalent to the charity care policy of LA's White Oak facility, whether or not the tenants are affiliated with Adventist Healthcare. Fourth, that Adventist Healthcare would submit to the commission and the city any proposed change in services for the village of education, health, and well-being and an annual report of operating results. And finally, that Adventist Healthcare would commence within 60 days of granting a certificate of need, a joint study with Tacoma Park regarding obtaining freestanding medical facility status for LA satellite facility on the Tacoma Park campus, and diligently pursue that goal, including pursuing any required legislation. So that is essentially what the therefores in the resolution read. Would somebody like to introduce that resolution, put it on the table? Councilmember Snipper has introduced it. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Schultz. And if I can offer one friendly amendment in the third, whereas, it says the city wishes to ensure that Tacoma Park residents, particularly poor, uninsured, and those that reply, rely on public transportation, and I would change those who rely on public transportation. I see that form, I see that grammatical usage all the time, and I think it's just wrong. So, is there council discussion of the resolution? Is there public comment of the resolution? And we'd welcome public comment, and if you can identify yourselves, and we'd appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes, and you'll hear a 30-second warning.
Thank you. Good to see you all again. I'm Joyce Portella, the president of Washington Adventist Hospital. I appreciate the opportunity to come and address this with you. We take very seriously and appreciate our partnership with the city in taking care of some of the most fragile and vulnerable among us, those who need healthcare. The first time I came into this chamber, I was delighted to see the old sanitarium on the wall over here, representing of an over 100-year legacy of healthcare services. And I do want to assure you that we take that legacy very seriously, it's precious to us, and it's not something that we intend to abandon. That's not, that's, I, I hope you hear that loud and clear through our plans, that taking care of Tacoma Park residents and their healthcare needs is very, very important to us. As you know, we have very serious challenges facing our hospital, and I won't run through all of the reasons why it needs to relocate. I will tell you that the challenges facing this hospital are formidable, and as its new president, I am absolutely convicted that it must relocate in order to plan for the future. I have been a part of a hospital that had another 100-year legacy in another state, another Adventist hospital, much in the same situation here, and it did not plan for the future, and it eventually did spiral downhill, and is just a shadow of its former self. And I, it would be heartbreaking to have that happen to Washington Adventist, and that's why I feel so passionately about this. I want to be sure that you understand fully what our plans are for the village of health and well-being, education, health and well-being. The 30,000-foot primary care center and urgent care center that we propose in partnership with Mary Center has very solid legs. I know Ms. Lane has addressed that in her, her memo, but there are solid legs that that can stand on, and had discussions even earlier today about that. The inpatient and outpatient services, including diagnostic services in the doctor's offices, all of those things will be present, we'll be doing outpatient behavioral health, there will actually be some expansion of services that aren't even on the campus today that will be there as the space allows, because we'll be vacating the acute care services. I do want to address in the resolution a couple of things, with your permission. I'm concerned about the charity care policy, because the way that doctors' offices are reimbursed in the state of Maryland is very different from the way that hospitals are reimbursed. If our charity care policy was administered exactly as written in doctors' offices, many of them would become instantly unviable. That, and I, I just want to say that I really believe that some of these items in this resolution need some negotiation, if you want to use that word, certainly discussion, to be sure that we understand the implications of what's here, because I think that some of this could get some unintended consequences. Thank you for the opportunity to address--
If, if you can just take a little bit more time to--
Sure.
Give us a little bit more information about your sense on the charity care policy, I think that would be helpful.
Doctors' offices are not reimbursed according to the Maryland payment system with what amounts to subsidized payments or under the all-payer system. If those doctors' offices implement the charity care policy that we have, which includes these subsidized payments that they do not enjoy, their profitability can go downhill overnight. And I don't see that doctors would stay on the campus. If we had them implement today our charity care policy, they'd leave. And so I don't think that's what is intended by this. I mean, if we had, let's say, a durable medical equipment company wanted to come and rent space on the campus to provide those services here, here locally, the charity care policy that we have would make their business completely not viable. And I know that's not the intent of the resolution, I'm concerned that that would be the unintended consequence. So I think, I think that one needs some work. I apologize, I'm looking for another one that I was concerned about here. Oh, thank you. It also says here that 24/7 urgent care would be required. While I know Nancy Lane addresses in her memo that 24/7 urgent care is planned, I'm not aware that that's exactly what was on the plan. I will be glad to go back and double-check the, the details on that, but I know we have promised urgent care, and we certainly plan to look at 24/7 as being viable, but if we, you know, consistently only had three people come in in the middle of the night, that's not viable. And so we would have to adjust the hours to the community need. Again, I'm sure that that's, you know, potential unintended consequences where the intent of a 24/7 urgent care sounds great, I'm not sure we're ready to promise that when we're a good four, maybe five years out from the provision of these services and don't know exactly what the community's going to need at that point. Mm-hmm?
Yeah.
Just stay up here. We're going to, I apologize, I'm Robert Jepson, we're just going to tag-team this. We were reading through the Nancy Lane report tonight, and we found a couple of things. I did want to note, her report is very good, by the way, there's a lot of good information. I think most of it were in strong agreement, I think it accurately portrays the situation. The one thing, in addition to what Joyce said, in Nancy's report, and again, it's a fine report, it mentions that we had committed 24/7. I, I don't know where that came from. What we had talked about, as Joyce indicated, with urgent care, is that's, the hours are still to be evaluated. We know there's a strong interest in after-hours care. And certainly, our experience at the freestanding medical facility in Germantown, which is not an urgent care center, it's a freestanding medical facility, is that the operational expense of operating at 24/7, particularly between the hours of 2:00 and 6:00 a.m., is, is very cost prohibitive. So that's, I think that's one point. The other point is, just a slight correction, the freestanding facility, medical, medical facility rules are supposed to be implemented by the Maryland Healthcare Commission according to the statute passed in 2010, in 2015, not 2012. I think it's said in the report, so that's a little bit later. But I think to that point, and the larger point there, is we understand the importance of that to the community. We've invested a lot of time between 2005 and 2010 and 2011 in that. And certainly, I think the larger issue there of collaborating with the city of Tacoma Park to figure out if that's a fit here, we certainly are, are interested in collaborating on that. But I just wanted to mention the timeframe on that, it's a little more elongated according to the Maryland Healthcare Commission's wishes. Thank you.
Thanks. Maybe we can get some additional public comment, and then if we have additional questions--
Sure.
We'll stand by.
Thanks. Other public comment?
Yes, I'm Pat Lovas, 7620 Maple Avenue, your favorite beach delegate. One thing I want to bring up, first of all, I want to thank Washington Adventist Hospital for what they've done for me. They've shown, shown me, they had the foremost in heart surgery, I had a four-way bypass operation, and some other work done. And I just recently had a, a massive blood clot in my right lung treated, and that's why I'm on oxygen today, and that's why I'm alive today. But I want you people to know that we're going to, I think we do need 24/7 urgent care in our healthcare, because injuries and diseases do not go by the hour of our clocks. You know, they don't take your time off, you know, and we've got to remember that. And plus, we're also in the, in the core of the most needed people in our, in our city. You know, we're right down here at the, at the end of Maple Avenue, there's a lot of elderly and disenfranchised people in our area who do not have access to medical care like the rich people do. We've got to remember that. They are brothers and sisters, too. I happen to be one of them. I happen to be one of the ones that have, that happen to rely on medical assistance. I do not have a job. I do not have, have the, the wealth and the monies that every, a lot of other people have, yet Washington Adventist Hospital has always been there when I needed them. You know, they've helped me with the gangrene, they've helped me with my granulomatosis, they've helped me with the blood clots, they've helped me with open-heart surgery. They've always been there, no matter what has happened, physical, mental, or any other help I need. All I have to do is call Washington Adventist Hospital. And I hope that I never lose that ability to have to do that, or to go traipsing all the way to the other side of the county to do it. You know, I hope we can keep something in Tacoma Park, right in our area where I need it the most. Because if I had to have gone all the way to the other side of the county when I had this massive blood clot, I would not be holding this microphone today. I would be in a box, I'd be in a pine box. I would not be here today. But it's, it's a close proximity to medical care, expert medical care, that I was able to survive. And I thank you people for that very much, and I hope to be able to, hope to be able to receive your services in a safe and a timely amount. And plus, I hope to have access to doctors and medical care as I have now, and I hope that the poor people, as well as, as well as the rich have, they equal access to medical care. Equal access is what we need, equal access. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you. Is there other public comment?
I'm Vanessa Dixon, I live on Heather Avenue, and I just wanted to concur with the comments that my neighbor just made about the, the need for 24-hour care. I would prefer, prefer for the hospital not to go. I'm one of the residents who wants the hospital to stay. I've taken my mother there, my son there a number of times, I've gone there, a neighbor who was ailing. I think my neighbor has made a compelling point about the need for the uninsured and underinsured to have access to quality 24-hour care, preferably a hospital, a full-service hospital, if not a hospital, then the next best system of healthcare that we can get. But there's also a compelling argument to be made about those who are not uninsured or underinsured, the rest of us, to be able to get to quality healthcare as soon as we can, whenever we need it. And understanding that the hospital is making an argument that they must expand or move or die, whatever they leave behind must be the best quality healthcare that Tacoma Park residents require, deserve. I think that must be the hospital's obligation to, to Tacoma Park if they leave.
Other public comment?
Trevor Delafield, and I'm a member of the Washington Adventist Hospital Land Use Committee and a former member of the Health Services Impact Committee. And I was saying to one or two of you during the, during the break, that this is the first time I've been back since you've redone the auditorium, and I am very, very impressed. It's beautiful. I am a former Adventist pastor here in Tacoma Park. I have never lived in Tacoma Park, I couldn't afford it when we moved here 20 years ago. But most of, of my professional life, in the 20 years we've been in the Washington DC area, has revolved around Tacoma Park, so I, I kind of feel that I have a real vested interest in the city. The church of which I was a pastor was founded in this building in 1904, over 100 years ago. So there's a real connection. And, you know, I, I don't think that, there is an intertwine-- And, you know, I don't think that, there is an intertwined, intertwined connection between Adventist history and the history of the city of Tacoma Park. I learned recently that Dr. Harry Miller, who's known by many, many people as the China Doctor, he was doctor to Shanghai Shek and so on, lived in the house. He was medical director, and I don't know how much the, I don't know if the hospital really realizes that much about his involvement in setting this hospital on the map. But I learned recently that he built the house and lived in the house diagonally across the street from the Tacoma Park Church. And he was, I'm diverging here, and I'm not going to have a chance to get to what I want to say about the CON, the proposal. But anyway, be as it may, Harry Miller was an Adventist doctor in China who also was involved in the work of the church in general by request. But anyway, his, Madame Shanghai Shek was the daughter of the printer in Shanghai who helped Harry Miller establish the longest-standing Christian publication in China, still published in Taiwan. And the big urns and so on in the lobby at WA were donations by Madame Shanghai Shek. And she donated a large part of the money, I learned recently, for the listener building, which is, I understand, slated to be torn down. Her sister was Madame Sun Yat Sen, who was the wife of the founder of modern China. Anyway, I just wanted to say, and I will conclude with this, that in general, I think that your office has done a wonderful job here. And I did feel that maybe half of the commission's a little bit heavy, and I think I agree with your, with Nancy's proposal, maybe a third might be a little more reasonable as far as the membership of the committee is concerned. I noticed there are two different options there. And I will conclude by saying that I agree with something that Colleen said in this chamber before it was remodeled, and that is that I think it's important for a civic entity, such as the city, municipal entity, to be careful not to dictate too much to a religious institution as to how it makes use of its property. I was a little scared by the letter that came out a little while back from the city, and I'm glad council is looking at this situation, because as I read the letter, it seemed to me that the conditions were so heavy that the hospital might decide that they just might wash their hands of the whole thing. And I just feel that we need to be careful not to expect more than they can do here when they're relocating to another locality. And I think the fact that they are offering to leave so many services behind is commendable on the part of the hospital, and it shows a commitment to outpatient services, which is one of the things that the report says, Nancy's report, says that they have not done as well on as other hospitals. Shows a real commitment to outpatient services on the part of the hospital, particularly in the area of wellness and prevention, which is a major issue in the healthcare crisis in our country today. Anyway, those are just a few of the things I would like to say, a little bit more, but I think that kind of encapsulates.
Councilmembers have some comments or questions. Councilmember Clay.
Hi. So I was gonna start by reiterating the fact that I appreciate the Adventists, and I appreciate the history of the Adventists in Tacoma Park, and I respect that independence. And I learned some new things about the Adventists again tonight. I'm learning new things about the Adventists all the time. I'm actually one of the two visits from 20912 here in WA ED, I think that must be, in the emergency department, visits in 2008. I learned one night here while I was sitting on the dais that I have something called supraventricular tachycardia. When my heart was racing, I couldn't get it to stop, and I just called my butt out of here. They were gonna take me to Adventist, and I actually begged them not to take me to the Adventist Hospital. And I was kind of in a panic. I said, "Don't you take me to the Adventist Hospital, because I'm gay, and they won't let my partner come in, and I'm gonna die tonight, and I won't see her." And I was very upset about it, and it didn't help my heart calm down. Then they said, "No, you know, Adventist is a good hospital, and it's the closest hospital, and you're still up over 150, and we're going." So after they injected me with three of those cycles of things that makes your heart stop, then they hauled me off to Adventist Hospital, and there they opened the door, and my partner was there, and they let him come into the emergency room with me, and they were totally respectful, in a way that other places haven't always been. And I learned something that night about the Adventists as well. So I have deep appreciation for the Adventists. When I came on to the council in 2005, I happened to have a friend who's a hospital architect, and I talked to him about this. I said, "So, you know, Adventists," my election was very interesting, because it actually centered around what happened with the Adventist Hospital, and I'll tell you about that sometime offline. But I said, "So, you know, what's the reality of this? They say they can't stay, they say they can't do a split campus. Should I believe them? Are they telling the truth? What's the story?" And he said, "You know, the fact is that the way that hospitals are developed today, everything is integrated. The way that they do the billing is integrated. The way that they move patients through the place is integrated. The way that they share equipment is integrated into this sort of superstructure of a hospital model where the building sort of becomes almost organic to the process of delivering healthcare. And that while Adventists might be able to stay for a while over the long term, they would just get eaten up by the costs of maintaining a split campus, and there's just clearly not enough room on that campus." And that has, I, he's my friend, and I forget what he does, and I'm like, "All right, I got it, I got it." So I've been aware for a while that, you know, that this is where, this is where we're headed. One of the things that I said to your predecessor was that it was gonna be really important, well, I don't want to tell you what to do with the land, it was certainly gonna be really important if you were gonna do anything other than a hospital with it, because it's zoned for housing, and you have a special exception permit for a hospital, that you were gonna really have to work with the community to make that happen. And I think you missed the message there, not you personally, but I think the Adventists missed the message there. Because what they did was they hired Vince Day and Dynamo, Dynamis Something Consulting, and they came, they did 100 interviews in the city, but they never really brought people together in a room together to talk about it. They really separated these, they interviewed me, I said, "Hey, the county's looking for a place to put in a swimming pool." And other people were like, "Oh, we want a nonprofit, we have all nonprofits, the city's all about nonprofits." And I think in doing so, you kind of, you missed the mark. And I have to tell you, I hear two things from my constituents, and I'll tell you the sort of the specialty one first. One is the birthing center. We had a woman, Amy Polk, who you may be aware of, who passed away a little more than a year ago, who was very big on the birthing center. We lost the midwives in the downtown office, you know, the story, and so I hear a lot of people in support of the birthing center. But the principal thing that I hear is people want significant medical care. And, you know, to them, that's an emergency room, and it's 24-hour access, and it's providing for all of the people in the community that ordinarily use the hospital. And what's reflected back in your village of health, wellness, and happiness, and Tootsie Rolls, and anything else that anybody told you, you know, in the individual 100 meetings, I don't think quite gets at it. And one of the things I think that happened is that you tried to make a model that would pay for itself, and that existed on the campus. And it's not that I object to any of the things that are there, and I saw the space for the birthing center, I saw the dialysis center, and I saw the different things that are there. But if at the end of the day, you have all of these bells and whistles of the Village of Health and Well-Being, and you don't have the 24-hour medical center and emergency care, you've missed the mark. And I think, I think that's what I hear reflected from people most of all. And some people like the other things, I think they appreciate them, but it's really this healthcare concept. They want nearby healthcare, and they want it to look and feel much like what this feels like now. Now, I would love to have a clean place to go get a mammogram, because whatever that community services, places that's up on New Hampshire Avenue and over Greenbelt where you go and get all the different services and the blood draws, those are terrible. So I'd like a nice, clean place, like at the Village of Health, I'd love that. But that's not the message that I've heard. I think that the hospital, in that, it has missed the mark. And it missed the mark because I don't think it understood what a real community consultation was like, and I don't think that they heard the underlying message. Because you've gotten all those people together in the room and asked them to prioritize things, the dialysis center and the nonprofit community wouldn't have been at the top of the list. If you came and you said, "We're gonna sell these 16 acres, and we're gonna sell them for $16 million, and we're gonna stick that in an endowment, and we're gonna use that endowment to cover the 2:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. portion of the full-service emergency medical center," you would have hit, you would have hit the need that I think that the community has been trying to tell you about. And so I just, I wanted to share that with you. And I wanted to share that in terms of the different components here, I think having more people from Tacoma Park would be important and critical to your success.
Couple more, then get back for some reason.
Just like we could, Mayor. I think that, you know, however you want to structure the meeting is fine, it's your meeting. If you want us to respond to some of these, we've taken notes, so if that's the way you want to proceed at the end, fine. If you want to just sit here quietly, we'll sit here quietly.
Take notes, be willing to respond, and then you can respond to a couple of them at once. And let me just add on top of Councilmember Clay's comments that I think that the, a similar piece of the process that I've seen going on through this whole couple of years of discussion has been that the 24-hour piece was crucial, and that we heard early on that it's very difficult, given how reimbursements are structured and how law works, that it's very difficult to do what everybody would really like in terms of a freestanding emergency room 24/7. It's like, even in spite of those impediments, what I've always heard people say is, "Yes, but you gotta fix those impediments. That's what we want." And so the frustration that we've had in going through some of this is knowing the restrictions that are in place that are something that are not imposed by you, are not imposed by us, but are imposed at a much higher level and are a lot more complicated than I'm sure any of us realize. But that whatever it takes to get to that point is where we feel that we have to keep pushing. Councilmember Snapper.
Thank you, Mayor. And I also want to thank you for coming and talking to us. I too had, I live right around the corner from the hospital, and I have three boys. That probably tells you all you need to know. Spent many, many hours at Washington Adventist Hospital, my wife, myself, my three kids, and I know the hospital well. Many of my friends, neighbors, do as well. We'd love for the hospital to stay. But a little history is worth remembering. As Mr. Jepson knows, because he was on this little committee we had, along with the head of Adventist Healthcare, we did negotiate an agreement with the community on the future of WA, with WA staying on the site. That was the terms of the agreement, with a particular level of expansion. And one of the parts of that was, we had urged the hospital to do a long-term plan, which they told us they did not have at the time. This is quite a long time ago. This process working with the hospital is a lengthy one. And we urged them to do a long-term plan, and as the prior president of the hospital told the community, when they did that, when they did a long-term plan, they realized that in the not-too-distant future, they would need an additional expansion, and that there would be no space on the site for that. It's just too small a site. There are a lot of additional details we could talk about, but that was the fundamental decision. And it was about that point that they began looking for a place to move to. You know, it made a lot of sense to me. So I'm left with sort of two fundamental questions that I hope you will address. I would love to have you answer them tonight, but that may not be possible. And the first one is fundamentally, would you agree? Would you agree to a binding agreement, to some kind of agreement that the hospital and the community came to, that you both agreed to? You know, of course, I would love it to be the five points we have here, but as you indicated, you have a number of concerns about, not only the ones you mentioned, but I'm sure you have concerns about some of the others as well. But fundamentally, what I'm asking, and I hear from the community, in addition to the concerns that Councilmember Clay raised about the emergency center, is some, would the hospital sign some agreement that would be binding, that had appropriately negotiated terms and conditions? And that's for the sort of current view of things. And then the second question pertains to going forward, because things are not static. You know, we don't expect, after all, healthcare reform is going to roll out, and that will make a lot of changes. At least, we hope it will make a lot of good changes. So we don't necessarily know what the future holds, so we need some mechanism for modifying whatever the initial agreement is. And so, of course, the follow-up question is, would you agree to a process that would also be binding going forward? Whether it's this kind of advisory council or some other independent body that we both agreed to, and a process for what happens when there are disagreements and so on. Just a way to establish a process for negotiating out changes that will, I recognize, will need to happen in the future. So it's those two questions, a current binding agreement and some agreement on a process going forward. And clearly, the details of those two would need to be worked out. You have a lot of concerns, we have a lot of concerns, but it's kind of the fundamental
Councilmember Schultz, follow-up, Councilmember Ray.
Well, keeping form, the last time I was in Washington Adventist Hospital was in the ER as a result of my wife dropping a drum on my head when I wasn't looking from a height. And the next thing I knew, I was pretty dizzy and had blood all over the place. And when I went to the emergency room, they did the little triage, as they do, and the nurse wanted to know if I felt safe in my home. She was afraid that I was suffering. And I understand from spousal abuse, and I understand that that's required questions, and good that they did, but I reassured her that I was not suffering from spousal abuse. She wanted to make sure that I was sure. So I reassured her a second time, and tried to hug my wife as an indication that we still loved each other. It was just people doing the job the right way. Anyway, in Nancy, just one comment I want to make, and I Anyway, Nancy, just one comment I want to make, and I feel, having you here in front of us, I feel optimistic that we can make some progress here through negotiation. And let me also preface this, that I understand that running a hospital is a business, that you've got a bottom line, whether it's a nonprofit or a for-profit, doesn't make any difference, you've still got to pay your bills. And an awful lot of your decision-making stems from the simple fact that sooner or later, you've got to be able to pay your bills and have, if that hospital is going to maintain, be able to sustain itself and to grow and keep up with its competitors. So that's by the way of bringing your attention to Nancy Lane's report, the top of, very top of page seven, I'll quote, "WAH slash AHC looked at the pay or mix of emergency room visits from the Tacoma Park area and found it dominated by Medicare and Medicaid. WAH would lose money operating a freestanding primary care clinic or an urgent care clinic that served this population." Is that an act, is that fact, is she, what she's saying, is that accurate? I mean, did WAH, the hospital, do such a study and decide that this is in fact the kind of patients that you would, would be, that the emergency room visits would be predominantly Medicare and Medicaid? And that you would indeed project losing money operating what she writes here as a freestanding primary care clinic or an urgent care clinic that served this population? And then my follow-up question with regard to that is that if in fact that is indeed the case, that you would lose money, is there such a way that we can figure out how you can, in your overall operations, you can maintain profitability, but still allow a, an operation, some kind of a clinic down in this campus, that while losing money would still be a huge benefit to the population, but still be within the larger context affordable to the hospital? So that's basically the question I have, or area of inquiry I have. I understand, I'm just, I'm trying to learn. I'm not coming to this question with a, you know, a bias one way or the other, I'm just trying to get answers and information, and that's sort of what I want to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
I thought it was very generous of you, Reuben, to actually suggest that we should engage in a conversation about having some sort of legally binding memorandum at this point, because we tried to do that already. And actually, at the beginning of the conversations that I had, at least with Jerry Stocks, and I think he probably had with many of us individually, that was what was suggested they might be interested in doing, or that they would be interested in doing. But when, you know, when it got down to it and the rubber hit the road, the hospital wasn't interested in that. They weren't interested in having some sort of legally binding agreement with the city under which the city could then support the certificate of need. So what that left us with is this, which is to pass a resolution that says, "We support the certificate of need with the legal body that approves this certificate of need with these conditions." That's really kind of what we're left with. I think it's too late, actually, unfortunately, to try and negotiate and have a back-and-forth and have some sort of legally binding agreement. And so what we're left with is that the Healthcare Commission looks at this and says, "Perhaps we'll grant the certificate of need with some requirements that the community has requested." I think that's unfortunate. You know, I'd be interested in talking a little bit more about number three, and whether our intention as a council is that we would want all of the providers there to have a charity policy, or whether it's that we really want urgent and the 24-hour primary and urgent care to have that policy. So that's not, I'm not totally clear on that one. I think I might be open to having it apply just to the primary and urgent care facility, but I'd want to hear from my council, fellow council colleagues. You know, I think the 24-hour issue is really an issue of thinking about what you're getting for the certificate of need. I agree that you have to move, right? Eventually, it's not sustainable to stay here. So the question is, is it worth it for us to be able to move to this brand-new greenfield site facility, basically, and continue to have a bunch of health functions here that are probably in aggregate profitable? But to lose money, if that's the case, I'm not certain it is, but that's what you're saying here, is that you would lose money potentially if you had a 24-hour primary and urgent care. To think of the whole thing as a package deal, to think of it as the healthcare that you're providing for the community in totality, both with the facility that exists, will exist to the north of here, as well as the urgent care and the other functions that remain here. I think you have to think about those things in totality, and does it, is it good financial sense for you overall to be able to get your certificate of need and move and still commit to having something here 24 hours a day? Now, there is this idea that there's a council with 50% membership from the city of Tacoma Park, where there could be some discussion, and that might change in the future with agreement, but not, I think, of going in premises that the 24-hour care would remain into the future. So that's kind of my perspective to you all to think about, I think, as a, from a business perspective. I'm sorry we couldn't negotiate earlier, but I'm interested to hear up here whether there's, if this is the right intention in number three.
Councilmember Seaman.
I would just say that I agree 100% with Councilmember Wright.
And I wanted to go next to City Attorney to get any feedback on the question that Councilmember Wright raised in terms of the intent on number three, and whether the intent is to provide a charity care policy equivalent for all tenants on the site, or what options there might be here.
Well, the intent, whether it be all tenants on the site, we certainly understand the problem about the lack of reimbursements that go with private entities and nonprofits other than hospitals. So this is the perfect example for me to kind of agree with Reuben, that we still would like to see good-faith negotiations, where instead of our hearing from the hospital, "Oh, we can't do charity care for all these tenants," we would have the conversation of, "How do we make sure that people like Pat can still get the healthcare that he needs, that the uninsured, the poor, will get these services in this healthcare village? And if it's not charity care, but it's some other methodology, we'd be interested in hearing what it is?" But the goal is very important to us. And the way to get there, I agree, would be best if we could do that through some real negotiation. I feel like what happened previously, rather than agreeing, it was futile, is that it was too early, that a lot of the hospital's plans weren't, I don't think, worked out enough to really have the discussion at the table. We kept saying, "We want a real operational plan, we want a real business plan, we want to know how you're going to have this money." And I don't think the hospital had the ability at that point to talk about the village in the way that it could now. It was primarily focused on the new hospital in White Oak and not what it was leaving here. And so assuming that that has moved quite a bit, from our perspective, I would like you to know that from the city's perspective, I believe, I would speak on behalf of the full government, we are interested in having that kind of a negotiation to get our goals met. And I agree that it would need to be an enforceable understanding.
And let me just add that the reason for this discussion tonight was that the certificate of need process was getting ready to move to the next stage with the closing of period for comments, and then moving on to the next decision phase from the health, whatever the body is. And my understanding is that there has been a delay in the closure of the stage of the process that we're in. We scheduled this for tonight, understanding that we needed to get our comments in, but it's been delayed by a month?
It's yet to be determined.
Yet to be determined.
It's definitely, the hearing was originally scheduled to begin June 6th. It's definitely been continued from that point till approximately a month from now, but the new date has not yet been decided.
Okay, so that if there are questions that need to be addressed, concerns that need to be talked over, there is some time to do that beyond the scheduled date, which kind of imposed the deadline on our comments and discussion tonight.
Yeah, is it premature for me to come up and make sure? But I did have a comment on that before you.
I think we're ready to go back to you all for additional comments and addressing questions.
Okay, I appreciate that. I just wanted to get up, because that is a critical point. And there's certain things we know and certain things we don't know. What we do know is definitively, the June 6th hearing date, which is when it was scheduled to begin, will not occur. You are correct, and as Ms. Silver knows, the hearing has been delayed because one of our key attorneys has become ill. We are confident that with a 30-day continuance, we can move forward with the hearing. So the June 6th date will not occur. To your point, Mayor Williams, you're referring to the closing of the record, and the city, rightly so, wants to preserve its right to comment on the record before the record closes. We don't know when the record will close. That will be up to the judgment of the reviewer. And I will pass along to you that we asked the same question of our attorneys last week, which is, "When will the record close?" And the counsel we got is that we don't know, but that if passed as prologue, there will be written notice for when it will close, so that the record will not close without written notice. That's what has occurred in the past.
Do you have a sense of how far advanced the written notice?
No, I'm sorry, I don't, because it varies. There is no set, you know, there is no set regulation or code that says the record closes X number of days before the hearing.
So it sounds like there may be a little more time. On the other hand, it may be a shorter time than anybody realizes, and the deadline could bite us.
We don't know, yeah. I think that's fair and accurate. And in further sort of responding to your point, the dates that the commission has floated, because obviously, there's witnesses that we're presenting, there's witnesses that the interested parties are presenting, and obviously, availability gets dicey as we head later into the summer. But they have begun floating possibilities beginning from mid-July through the first week in August. So I think that process of contacting the witnesses is occurring. It's certainly our hope that the hearing will take place in July. I mean, we feel like we needed 30 days to delay to get our attorneys prepared, but we don't, we're not interested in a long delay. So that is as yet to be determined. And I think Ms. Portell and I, if you're ready, wanted to took notes and would like to respond to each of these points, providing information.
That was your question.
We'll tag-team this, and I think we hit them all, but if we miss something, please bring us back to that. I do want to address that the doctors' offices on the campus today do quite a bit of charity care. And so I don't want to imply that in asking that we reconsider that one item on the resolution, I don't mean to imply that charity care would not be available for many of these other offices or independently-owned practices, because they do it today. It's tying their policy to perfectly mirror the hospitals that would be problematic. And today, I don't have the right to tell them what they have to do related to percentage of charity care or anything, but they do it, because it's just part of their mission. So does that make sense? Okay, we'll be sure that we're clear on that. I appreciated what you had to say about the infrastructure and how the infrastructure of a hospital is very integrated. When Bill Robertson asked me to come out here and consider taking this job, I was meeting with he and Jerry Stocks on Saturday night for dinner, and they looked at me and they said, "Now, you're going to be going through a tour of the hospital on Monday. Let us prepare you for what you're going to see." I said, "Gentlemen, I went through the entire place earlier today. I did a self-guided tour." And I looked at them and I said, "Just based on the time that I've been in this hospital, you know we're in trouble if we don't move, right?" And they looked at me and they just kind of nodded. So I really appreciate what you had to say from your architect friend who tagged it perfectly, because running inpatient services and then outpatient services that are so inconvenient down in the bowels of the organization, it is, it's a nightmare, frankly. I'm very, very proud of what our staff accomplishes each and every day and how efficiently they do work with what they have. It isn't sustainable into the future, and I appreciate that confirmation. I'm going to do a little commercial here. We have a great mammography suite down in the radiology area at Washington Adventist. My mother had her mammogram there last week, so, and it's really clean, so I want to be sure you know that. When you started to tell your story, I started to cringe, because I thought, "If she tells me that her partner was not welcomed in Washington Adventist, I'm going to have a high-speed come apart right here in front of the council." I'm delighted that that wasn't the case, and I would hope that my personal cellphone would light up like a tiki torch if that ever happened. I want to be real clear on that issue. You talked about the business of healthcare. I'm losing track now of which one brought this up, but, and while I do, I want to be careful to say, yes, we are looking at the totality of our services on both campuses as being viable. We do recognize that, as Sister Irene Kraus from Sisters of Charity at the time coined the phrase, "No margin, no mission," we have to have a margin to be able to earn the right to fulfill our mission. But we're not looking for each individual service that we provide to have to post a positive bottom line. We don't do that today in the hospital. We have services that lose money, but they also generate referrals for other services that help cover that up. And so we are looking at this as a totality of business. We do want the Village of Education, Health and Well-Being to be viable as a standalone business. It doesn't mean that that means that we're going to stop doing something just because it doesn't make money standing on its own. We do want a viable campus here, so that frankly, it can't, nobody can take potshots at us, "Why are you doing this?" Because it's detracting from the services that you're providing in other areas. We want it to be a viable business that is strong and serves the residents of this community for decades. One other thing, the ER Medicare and Medicaid services, we did do a study on that, and I didn't bring it with me, so I'm not going to quote numbers that I'm sure would be off by some. It was at least 70% of our visits, on the last study that I saw, were Medicare and Medicaid. And it is very true that as a standalone service for emergency department, our emergency department today would lose, I don't know the number right off the top of my head, but it would lose a lot of money. That is specifically why we were partnering with Mary's Center to provide this urgent care service, because Mary's Center, as a federally qualified health clinic, the FQHC designation that Nancy Lane refers to in her memo there, as an FQHC, they get more money for the same services than what Washington Adventist can receive. And we've also got the issue of, "What could we provide standalone?" You talked about that, and we know that it's until 2015 that we can actually apply for the CON for some of those standalone services. I don't know whether that applies to emergent care or urgent care or specific.
This is freestanding medical.
Yeah, we don't really, like you said, we don't know all of those answers today, and they're at levels much higher than we are determining that. But that's specifically why we are not planning to provide those services on our own. They're just not financially viable, but through Mary's Center, with their FQHC status, they can receive additional reimbursements that make it more viable than if we were providing it on our own. So that's the linkage there, and I wanted to be sure that that was understood, as to why we were bringing Mary's Center into this, besides the fact that they are meeting a well-defined need in our community, even as it is. And they will be opening a clinic on the campus either later this year or around January of next year to actually begin establishing their services on the campus even before we relocate.
Just a couple of other comments, just quickly. Councilmember Clay, I think you mentioned the Dynamis process. I think your comments, I've taken note of it, they're fair. I think with Dynamis, we were relying on their experience in doing this in Detroit and Redding and other facilities. There was also the opportunity, we felt, with respect to Dynamis, for people to speak confidentially to them. We were concerned that if I, or Mr. Stocks, or Mr. Robertson, or somebody else dialogued with people, that it might inhibit people's free flow of discussion. So that's why that choice was made there, but your comments are appreciated. Councilman, Mayor Williams, I think the issue of 24/7... Councilmember, Mayor Williams, I think the issue of 24/7, we understand. We heard loud and clear through the Dynamis process. I think we've been trying to figure out a way to ensure that we're providing care and that these facilities are sustainable long-term. So right now, there really is no model for 24/7 ER care. We're waiting for the regulations to come out. As Ms. Portella indicated, in absence of that, the FQHC model seems to be the most effective. That doesn't rule out after-hours or 24/7, but to make that commitment right now is, we're not sure that that's something we could abide by. With respect to Mr. Snipper's comments about the agreement, I mean, we'd love nothing more than to have the support of the city of Tacoma Park. I think we've made that clear. And so we think dialogue has been helpful. I think that we probably each started out here. Through dialogue, we moved here. I think more recently, we've moved here. So I think we've made progress. And Councilmember Wright, I think to your point, I hear your frustration and understand that. We'd like to have an agreement too, and we'd like for the city to understand the real challenges that we're in, and we'd like to continue to be a partner and plan to be a partner with the city. I do think to Ms. Silver's point, though, at the time where there were agreements that were passed force, in our opinion, we felt they were overly onerous. I think her point is well-taken, that that was a good year and a half or two years ago, where the business model and the business plans were not fully established, at least to the extent that they are now. And as Ms. Portella indicated, we have never stipulated that each service has to make money. We have debt that we have to retire, so the, all the aggregate of services have to be a going concern and have to make an overall, at minimum, revenue-neutral, if not positive bottom line. And I think with respect to Ms. Silver's comment about charity care, I think, you know, one of the things that I thought about coming down here is that I think we're all in agreement that we all have the same goal and objective in mind, which is, I think, you want to ensure that care is provided, we want to ensure that care is provided. I think the question becomes, as we navigate through these myriad of rules, the changing federal landscape with respect to oversight of healthcare, the ongoing changes at the state level, is how do we ensure that that happens in an effective way, given the fact that the hospital is not going to move for, at the earliest, four years from now? So I think that with respect to charity care and ensuring everyone gets care, I think we're on the same page with respect to that. What we don't want to do is come to a situation where we overpromise or commit to something and then four years hence are not able to live up to that commitment. So I think some of the cautiousness you're hearing from us is simply a concern about overpromising in a changing landscape while trying to abide by, I think, our mutual goal of ensuring that everyone receives care. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright, you have another comment?
I have a question and a comment. I just, I listen often very closely to the language that people use, and Ms. Portella, I heard you use two different tenses related to the Mary Center. And first, I heard you saying, "We were engaging them in the past tense," like it was a conversation that we were having but is now done. And then I heard you at the end saying, "They will be opening this clinic, starting clinic." So I'm just curious, where does this stand with them? And my understanding is there's, for them to truly open a clinic that's described in our, whether it's 24 hours or not, but really a primary and urgent care clinic, like substantive clinic, there's a financing issue, right? They need capital. So I'd just be curious about where we are in terms of your engagement with them and how concrete is that?
I'm so glad you asked this, because I had intended to address that and didn't, and I apologize if I was unclear in my tenses. It is true with Mary Center, we have a past, present, and a future, and so it's quite possible that I was referring to a different stage of our relationship. We have been partners with Mary Center, I don't know for how long, but it is for some time now, in that we have actually provided some financial subsidy for the current Flower Avenue operation. We also are planning an expansion. They are fairly maxed out on their services at Flower Avenue. It's very difficult to get new patients in and new appointments, although we are managing it through a referral process from our emergency department, but they're very, very full and busy there. So they are going to be opening in what was our old retail pharmacy space on the campus, a satellite office, if you will, for additional services. They have applied for a grant. The chances of them receiving that, they believe, are very high. We will know that in August. They plan, assuming that the grant is received, to open that clinic in January, and we have committed to tenant improvements that would be offered to any leaseholder on that space. We have also guaranteed them that we would keep that lease to the very minimum that we could stand to operate it. So that's part of what's happening present and in immediate future. The longer-term future is the 30,000-plus square feet that we talked about in the Village of Education, Health and Well-Being. And David Tatro, who is the chief operations officer of Mary Center, had estimated when he spoke with Nancy Lane that it would take $6 to $8 million of improvements for them to occupy the space. We saw that and hit the roof, because I didn't know where that was coming from. He later said, "Well, I just figured that's what it would take." Well, Mr. Tatro has never toured the space that they would be occupying. And so we had discussion with him last week about that, and he'll be taking a tour here very shortly and realize that it isn't going to take anywhere close to that amount of renovation for Mary Center to provide urgent care services. It'll be out of the current emergency department. What is operating today is Washington Emergency Department as a good part of the space. That's not all of it. They would be behind the ED as well. But it isn't going to take anywhere close to that amount, and we are fully committed to providing them as we would to any other tenants and leasehold improvements going along with the lease. So we'll be working on that, the specifics of that agreement, in the coming weeks, and I feel very comfortable that we're going to achieve a mutually agreeable solution there. David just assumed he was going to be inheriting space that needed to be gutted and rebuilt, and that's not the case at all.
Thanks for clarifying that. And then my, just one comment, I think to elaborate, I think on what Councilmember Clay said, related to Dynamis and the kind of issue of missing the mark. You know, you cited that part of the reason you wanted to have them was because people would feel more free to talk to you, and if you were there publicly, that people in Tacoma Park might not share their full feelings. And I think this is where you missed the mark. Maybe in Detroit or Redding, they have residents that are concerned about what the powers that be might feel or do reacting to people sharing their opinion. That is not the case in Tacoma Park. Having been on this dais for a few years and knowing the activist nature of the community, I don't think, no offense to you, you're a very powerful person, I don't think anyone in the community is concerned about how you might react or care about your feeling or that sort of stuff. So I just think that's the kind of, and maybe there could have been, if this is going to continue in the future, a process like that, maybe there's a combination of both, that there's some interviews, but really some big town hall meetings where people can express.
That's fair.
Councilmember Robinson?
I will keep it short, I haven't spoken tonight, and appreciate your being here and all your comments. On the Dynamis issue, I remember being interviewed by them, and this is a little darker, I guess. They painted a very clear picture of one location that had lost a hospital and it was all boarded up. And they said, "You don't want your, you don't want your community to look like this, do you?" I instantly took, I was, took offense at that, and it was, had left a really bad taste in my mouth, I think, with the other people I was there with. But you've come, we have come a long way, and it seems like we're closer, and I'm glad to hear that you're talking with Mary Center in a really direct and honest way. I hope you can continue that. I don't know, I guess we'll have to talk about whether the results of those conversations fit in with what we're going to do, but we're not going to do it tonight, whatever it is, if I understand that right. Anyway, thanks for coming.
I would like to get a sense of what we want to do going forward, whether we do in fact want to pass something tonight or whether we want to delay. It sounds like the, if we delay, the timeframe is uncertain. We're probably talking about needing to do something, today is the last day of May. It sounds like we would need to do something in June for sure. We have three meetings coming up in June, the 6th, the 13th, and the 20th. So those are the options, if we do something. If we postpone action on this, those meetings generally have full agendas. We shuffled things around to put this one in tonight and the 4:10 discussion next week. The 13th is full. Councilmember Wright will not be here.
I'll be on the phone.
Yes. And the 20th has some items on it. I will not be here. So we can delay if we want. What would we get clarified in postponing? Or do we want to go ahead and deal with it tonight? And I'd look for other people's opinions. I'm tempted to want to say, if we do it tonight, do we want to change anything with this? And if we need to come back with something that amends this in a timely fashion and we have the information, we can do that. But at least then, we have something so that we don't all of a sudden find out that they say, "Oh, you know, here's your written notice, we're closing the record, and we're closing the record in four days." And we go, "But wait a minute, now we can't comment." So that's where we're at.
I would propose a friendly amendment that we change number three, to make it clear that we're talking about charity care policy, equivalent to the charity care policy for the White Building, related to the 24-hour primary and urgent care facility. That would be my suggestive change. Actually, I think I agree with the hospital. It's going to be actually hard for them to require every single facility on the campus to abide by the same charity care policy. And I think what we're saying is we want people to have access to care, but there may be situations, you have to be realistic, right? If the issue is not urgent, there may be situations where it does make sense for actually someone to travel to the new hospital to get their service and get charity care at that location for certain functions. But it sounds like, seems like the city attorney had a concern with that.
If I might-
Sure.
I would just be careful how it's worded, because already, in the hospital's application, they do say that any of the organizations that are affiliated with Adventist Healthcare will provide the same charity care that the hospital does. So the only thing that we would be amending by Councilmember Wright's suggestion would be that the, it wouldn't be all the other tenants, it would just be the urgent, primary and urgent care clinic.
So could we say something that all facility, all providers that are affiliated with the hospital as well as the primary and urgent care? Because we don't know exactly the structure of that relationship, with that language works. So we're saying, yes, to what they're proposing in their certificate of need, as well as this urgent primary care facility, but not every single tenant.
Yes, I'm not commenting on the value of the amendment, but yes, that's the way to do it.
You can comment on the value of the amendment also. I appreciate your opinion.
Maybe another way to do it, in addition to that, is also that there should be some charity care policy in all the tenants, rather than it being equivalent to the hospitals.
I think what we'll do, are there other things that people want to put on the table as potential changes? And what I'll do is, if it's just this one, or there are other ones, and we'll get the language clear, so that the clerk has it.
I'm interested in hearing what, if Ruben and Colleen have a reaction to that.
What I wanted to do was, see what those, see if we have any other ones, and then take it as an amendment with language that we vote on, and then vote on the body, if that's what we want to do. So I don't want to just kind of smoosh it out there. So other items, and Councilmember's thoughts?
I would, as the secondor of the resolution, I accept the friendly amendment based the gist of that, which is Councilmember Wright's proposed. I would also sort of suggest we may want to enter some new language to stating that our, that we want to enter into as soon as possible to a conversation or a discussion or negotiation, whatever verb seems to be right, or now, with the powers that be at Washington Adventist Hospital, to see, to try to ameliorate any of these concerns mutually. And there's been discussion here about the idea of having a concerted effort here that was tried many years ago. It failed for other reasons. Now the time seems right, and maybe something like that needs to be. And I don't have wording, but I'm just trying to capture the essence of what I heard here tonight, about having a more intense dialogue between the hospital on the one side and the community on the other.
Okay. Councilmember Snipper, and then Councilmember Clay.
I too select, agree with the proposed amendment to three, as suggested, as long as we include that there be some charity care policy, as our attorney suggested. With regard to whether to go ahead and do it tonight, I actually think that's a pretty good strategy, because we will in fact have other opportunities to modify the resolution as we go forward. I think that the Village Advisory Council, as we've outlined it, it's very outlined here. It's not much detail, but it does capture the idea of having the community and the hospital work out details. And it's, I would flesh it out more if I were drafting this myself, but at least the kind of skeleton is here for that kind of a process. So that's what makes me feel like we could go ahead with it, is that we have the bare bones, pieces, right here. Not perfect, but pretty good.
Councilmember Clay?
I guess I would rather submit something than nothing at this point. And in response to Councilmember Wright, I would agree that we need to make a modification that the hospital can move to. What I heard the hospital say is that they don't have the authority to tell the standalone providers what they will or will not do, and that the other providers are already part of the Washington Adventist Hospital activities and are therefore, it seems to be covered under their existing charity plan, which I heard the city attorney say is detailed in the certificate of need anyway, which makes me wonder why you have to have the clause in the resolution to begin. What is it saying that isn't already detailed in the certificate of need?
Because I think that it's not clear that the 24-hour facility would necessarily be affiliated with the hospital to follow under those same policies. They might tell us it will be, but you can't be certain about that. So I think if you want the 24-hour facility to have that charity policy, you need to be explicit about it.
Ms. Portella?
Let me just clarify also, the, on the campus of the village, we will have services that are provided by Washington Adventist Hospital, and then there will be those that are contract-related services, such as Mary Center, and then some that are, for example, most of the doctors, we call it the White Building, the medical office building, that's closest to Carroll. Most of those doctors in there plan to stay there. I have no business relationship with them, other than they have applied for and received medical staff privileges at the hospital.
So it's a condo lease building, right?
It is. So those are the kind of differentiations I'm trying to make. For example, the rehab unit that is operated on the fifth floor of the current hospital is actually a separate licensed facility, although certainly a friendly, because it's a service of Adventist Healthcare. They're separately licensed and, for our purposes, are a tenant. And they have separate policies, it's a separate business, and they have separate policies related to that business. But services provided by Washington Adventist Hospital already have, are under our charity care policy. And then, for example, the doctors in the White Building, you know- And then, for example, the doctors in the White Building, you know, when they're on call for the emergency department, they see anybody who comes to them for services. So they're already providing that charity care. It's just they're not falling under my policy. So I hope that helps clarify.
So it's no difference to you whether or not the resolution says that the 24-hour emergency care facility that's left behind complies with the Washington Adventist Hospital charity policy or not because in your mind it already does.
It already does, and it will. I mean, Mary's Center, that's their mission.
Right.
And so, and if it was provided by the hospital because regulations in Maryland allowed that situation to change and we could provide that service alone, it would automatically fall under her policy. But Mary's Center, that's what they do. That's their mission. So I'm not really worried about the primary care that we provide, whether it's through Mary's Center or us falling under that policy. It's those independent physicians that will not stay on the campus if they have to agree to somebody else's charity care policy. They're running their own practice and would probably resist my input.
And that seems reasonable. So then the purpose of that portion of the resolution is to just be clear that it applies to the 24-hour emergency care facility in case at some point in the future that becomes not operated by the Washington Adventist Hospital elements? No, am I still missing it?
I'd like to see one other slightly separate piece. Which is that the other tenants indicate what their policy is about charity care. Not that we're saying they must have one or not, but it's a way of alerting folks on both sides of this issue that something is happening. They would say what it was.
Except that they've just said that they don't have that kind of authority. I mean, the condo building is essentially, they're leasing a condo.
Right. Well, I don't know exactly how this would be affected, I agree, carried out.
Also, yes, I support your change.
So it sounds like what we have tonight is a desire to change number three to indicate that it's for the 24-hour primary and urgent care piece. And if there's another way to add something else in there that will improve it, that could be done after we figure out what that is. Ms. Silver.
If I could try some language, just an idea. It doesn't quite do what councilmember Snipper was suggesting, but let me just lay this out. Adventist Healthcare must require that the 24-hour primary and urgent care provider and all tenants affiliated with Adventist Healthcare at the Tacoma Park campus provide a charity care policy equivalent to the charity care policy of Washington Adventist Hospital's White Oak facility, and that all tenants of the village will provide a reasonable charity care policy.
No.
Councilmember Clay.
They'll provide a, what do you mean by they'll provide a reasonable charity care?
In other words, it would be different probably for each kind of group. So that a private doctor's office that's in a condo and it can't be, probably not required as part of their lease, might be quite different than, for example, the kidney dialysis program, which I am especially concerned that a person wouldn't be unable to get that service because of their charity needs.
I don't own that building.
Yeah, but what I heard you say is in conflict with what they said that their capability and their span of control is.
Well, that.
I don't have a span of control over those doctors in that building because they don't lease anything from me. They're condo owners, and so I don't sign an agreement with them for their space. I have no.
No, Ms. Portella, I certainly understand about the doctor's building, that that's a separate kind of problem because of its condominium ownership. But something like the kidney dialysis center is going to be a direct tenant of the new village, isn't that correct?
Yes.
So it just seems to me a lot of those kinds of services, we are concerned that they have charity care policies, although I think the council is very sympathetic to the fact that it can't be required, that it be the exact same one that the hospital has.
My concern at this point is that if we start putting too many restrictions on that, given that what we're doing today works charity care-wise, and I understand we're proposing big changes to this campus, but I want to be sure that we don't make it so restrictive that people don't want to be a part of what we're doing.
And a reminder that what we're doing here is requesting that, give me the right phrase, the.
Maryland Healthcare.
Maryland Healthcare Commission? I keep wanting to say Cost Review Commission. Agree and put these in as conditions of the CLM. So it's not up to us to say, this is what you must have at this point. That's what this process is, is the request to the Maryland Healthcare Commission.
Right. And what the commission is looking at is the adverse impacts of the move on the most vulnerable people in our community. And so we're saying, these are our concerns, and we're asking the commission to reflect on these concerns. You're right that they're certainly not bound to.
They could say, well, no, that's not reasonable, we can't do that. Or they can say, yes, that's a good idea, and we'll do more.
Right.
Or they could say, fine. So.
Well, we just heard that 70% of the people who use the emergency room are of this category. They no longer will have that option. What will they have?
I would hesitate though to characterize all of those receiving Medicare as, I mean, we have some folks, when I said the 70%, that's Medicare and Medicaid recipients. We have some Medicare recipients who have very healthy secondary insurances and the ability to pay all their co-pays quite well. So I don't want to characterize all of those folks as indigent, and I didn't mean to imply that.
Councilmember Clay.
I think the language is fine up to the last statement, which I would leave off. I don't think it helps us and it brings us into all kinds of other areas, and I think we should focus on the core of what it is that we're interested in from the hospital, which again, come back to what my constituents tell me, is 24-hour emergency care, full services, and, you know, whether or not they lease to the dialysis center isn't even there now, is it? It is there.
Yes.
It operates mostly in patients' services now, but it is there.
And does it operate under the hospital's current charity plan now?
Yes, it's a contract service. Basically, it's provided the service, and they're our patients.
They're your patients. And so would that relationship continue after you moved? How would it be different?
The outpatient dialysis center would be different. It would be more of a service that they would provide under their banner. So the question is a valid one about what would their charity care policy be?
Right.
And we could certainly ask them to divulge that in the contract that we established with them for their service. It will be different than what's provided today. We don't have the space to do a full-blown outpatient dialysis service today. It's provided mostly to our current inpatients.
Okay. So in the future, though, those inpatients will be at your White Oak facility conceivably?
Correct. And they'll be receiving dialysis services there.
Under the Washington Adventist Hospital charity plan?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I'm okay with that. So I don't think we need the last part of that.
Councilmember Seagull.
I know a number of my constituents do use the out care for dialysis, and many of them do require the charity aspect. And so I think it is important that we safeguard that in some way.
Do they, if they're under outpatient now, do they get, is that paid for under Washington Adventist Hospital charity care now?
That's a great question, and I don't know the answer to that. I can get back to you on that. We have very few outpatients who use the dialysis service, and frankly, that question just hadn't come up yet, but I can get you the answer to that.
Thank you. My recommendation is that we leave that part off. If we had come up with some language that we want to add to that, we can do that.
Sure.
So maybe we can have the language again from Ms. Silver without the last phrase on it.
Adventist Healthcare must require that the 24-hour primary and urgent care provider and all tenants affiliated with Adventist Healthcare at the Tacoma Park campus provide a charity care policy equivalent to the charity care policy of Waz White Oak Facility.
Okay, and that would be the number three. Any comments up here? Yes?
I apologize for the jumping chat routine. The one thing that I'm concerned about, I can't think of anything else except the rehab that is leasing, the inpatient rehab services that are leasing space from us right now, although that's provided by Adventist Healthcare. I know the charity care policy is different. I can't articulate exactly what it is, but it's because admission criteria to rehab hospitals is very, very different from acute care hospitals. They do charity care there, and we're as committed to it as we are in the other parts of the hospital, but how that is structured is somewhat different because of admission criteria for rehab hospitals. There are federal regulations about admission criteria that are very, very specific, and so I know there are some differences there.
If that's the case, the record doesn't say that. The application or the modified application or the questions that were posed by Commissioner Worthington and responded to by the hospital have this exact provision that says any Washington Adventist affiliated entity will be bound by that charity care policy. So there may be a mistake that you want to correct, but that was what we were told on the record.
Sure. Rob and I actually were just talking about that, and I believe it's largely accurate. I just wanted to be very clear with you that I don't want to misrepresent that that rehab unit might not have some minor differences. It still certainly meets the intent of our charity care policy and is consistent with our mission. I just don't want somebody coming back later saying, you said that everything that you provide on that campus was going to follow the same policy. There are probably some minor differences in their policy because of that admission criteria.
Councilmember Wright.
It's not on this issue, it's in the direction of city staffs.
Okay. Councilmember Clay.
Does your language currently say Washington Adventist Hospital or Washington Adventist Healthcare Services?
It says both. It says that it's equivalent to the charity care policy of, it's really WH, WAH's White Oak Facility, probably should be WHI's White Oak Facility, is that right?
I'm sorry?
It should be now WAHI.
For the White Oak.
For the White Oak Facility. So that would be a correct.
I'm sorry, what was the question?
What is the I saying?
It's a legally separate entity. It's Washington Adventist Hospital, Inc. It's legally separate because it will be, it's essentially its own entity operated by Adventist Healthcare, but it becomes a legally different entity for purposes of the creation of the new hospital.
So my question is, based on the way that your language is worded, if the rehab facility is a Washington Adventist facility but not a Washington Adventist Hospital facility, is it not a tenant like the Mary Center or the Birth Center might be?
It is a tenant now.
And therefore not identically subject to that language or not?
When I said, both words were used.
Yeah.
They were different places. We had said Adventist, that all tenants affiliated with Adventist Healthcare.
Okay.
And again, I think this does reflect what's in the record that's already been offered.
And I think that's worth checking to Ms. Portella's point, the license is different. It is not an acute care license. The rehab hospital is licensed under Adventist Rehabilitation Hospital of Maryland, it's a separate license for 77-bed inpatient rehabilitation facility, 55 of which are in Rockville and 22 of which are in Tacoma Park. So, I mean, I know you'll make your decision, but I do want to point out that that is not an acute care service, it is a rehab service. To Ms. Portella's point, the admission criteria is different, as is the reimbursement criteria. So I just wanted to inform that.
So if we change, if you remove the Washington Adventist, God, I can't remember all the different acronyms. If you remove the Washington Adventist Health Services from your language, does that then just encompass the Washington Adventist Hospital Incorporated? And do you lose anything in that designation other than the rehab facility?
Yes, there are several other tenants that are affiliated with Adventist Healthcare.
That aren't affiliated with the hospital?
That are currently, that are not, for example, the whole behavioral unit, which is another one that I think it would be very important that they have a strong charity policy.
So it sounds like your language is based on the certificate of need.
Yes, the certificate of.
By the so far.
Right.
Or the submission so far.
The submission so far makes this offer, so I suppose we shouldn't spend so much time on it because it's already being offered by the hospital. But it's probably good that we're having this discussion.
I think it's very helpful, because I think there's a misunderstanding there, and I'd be interested to know where that is in the record. I think it's important to note that these services each have different licenses. And to take a step back for a moment, Maryland has a very unique rate-setting system in Maryland which allows hospitals to receive reimbursement, acute care hospitals, licensed acute care hospitals, to receive reimbursement for charity care. And that is different than the rehabilitation facility, which is not re-regulated and which operates under a separate license. So when we talk about Washington Adventist Hospital, Inc., that is the acute care services of the present Washington Adventist Hospital in White Oak. That's completely separate from dialysis. As Ms. Portella said, it's completely separate from the primary care physicians. It's completely separate from the behavioral health, completely separate from the rehab. So, I mean, I know you'll make the decision, you feel is right, but I just want to make sure we're operating under the same set of information. And again, I think we're, I'm interested to know where that is in the record, because I think that's a point of important clarity.
Now we're getting into areas that's making my head hurt.
So it seems like we should go with the language we have proposed.
I think so.
Unless, if it changes in submission, then we have plenty to talk about.
And that's a fair point.
We consider our favor, we uncovered that.
Okay, so we have the amended language, and if you would read it one more time.
Number three, Adventist Healthcare must require that the 24-hour primary and urgent care provider and all tenants affiliated with Adventist Healthcare at the Tacoma Park campus provide a charity care policy equivalent to the charity care policy of WHI's White Oak Facility.
And that was offered as a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, which we agreed to.
Which was agreed to by the mover and the seconder. So that's now part of the motion on the table. And are there any further comments on the amended motion on the table from the council?
I have one question, not a comment, just on the procedure now, so we're going to vote on this.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But there is time, so if Corporation Council does review this language and says, y'all, you know, there's some tweaking and needs to be done to this, we still have the opportunity to do next.
There's potentially time to amend this, tweak it in the near term if anything is brought to the council's attention that needs to be addressed.
Thank you.
Is there any public comment on, again, I just want to make sure we cover all the bases here. We're getting late, but just make sure that nothing else we got to cover.
This is not on the point which has just been dealt with at length, but on two B, I would suggest that even the village of health and wellness, or whatever the exact terminology is, is not just a Tacoma Park service. It will be regional in nature and serve unique purposes and needs. And therefore, I think 50% of the membership of this council, village advisory council, to be appointed by the city of Tacoma Park, I think that's a little excessive. And I agree with the proposal that Nancy had on page 11 of the 11. And I would kind of suggest that you say something like the following, six of the 17 members, or at least one-third of its membership, be appointed by the city of Tacoma Park rather than 50%.
Okay, thanks. Anybody interested in making that change? Okay. Nobody? Nobody wants to offer that as amendment, so any further public comment? Okay, so we have this resolution, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you all.
So I just have a question about the procedure, just a follow-up. So is it, my understanding that this wouldn't be submitted to the commission until we know there's a deadline so that, because I think it'd be a little bit odd if we submit one thing and then we come back and give a different resolution.
I think that makes sense is to wait till we're giving that closing notice.
It sounds.
Be sure to get it in, whether it's advisable or not.
We'll have this one ready and we will, we will stay in touch with the process so that written notice or no written notice, this gets in on time. And that gives us an opportunity to change it.
I also just want to advise the council that there's another place that will have input. It may be a little bit at the end of the process, maybe too far at the end, but our role as a participating entity allows us to make a legal argument at the very end of the process before the commission decides anything. So we will have that, that time to speak as well.
I would also like the council to direct Ms. Silver to, since we've got a lot of material covered tonight, a lot of things discussed and some changes to the wording, I think we should ask our attorney to review what, what's been done in light of this conversation and any new information that she gets and gives feedback to the council, you know, within a week on whether there are any things that she sees that maybe ought to be changed.
Sure.
And city attorney and I are meeting tomorrow, so if there's something that needs to come back to us, there might be an opportunity to bring that tomorrow. Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Love it. All right. Love it.